Good evening and welcome to the March 15, 2022, meeting of the Chatham Select Board. This meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone, smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify me. Pursuant to Governor Baker's June 16, 2021 signing of an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including the extension of his March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, and that's general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until July 15, 2022, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted via in-person and remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, our conference ID number is 134208476, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. Again, welcome, everyone. We have a very long agenda tonight. We'll start with, please, as a reminder, mute your mics and turn off your cameras. And let's start with a roll call. Our Vice Chair, Shereen Davis.
Present.
Clerk Cory Mitters.
Present.
Select Board Member Dean Nacastro.
Present.
Select Board Member Jeff Dykens.
Present.
And the Chair, Peter Kokolos, is present. I'm going to go give you a quick overview of what we're going to do, although it's going to be more detailed than before. And as I said, this is going to be a very long meeting. And to start with, I would, I would hope that everyone, and I hope we're going to tie it to an extent, you keep your comments to three minutes. Couple of reasons for this. Most of the agenda items this board has seen, a number of these have gone before public hearings in other places, but, but in any case, we will, we'll continue. I'll, you know, I'm usually pretty generous, but at this time, given all of that, we're going to try and keep it to about three minutes per person. Overview of what we're going to do. We start with our minutes, then we have public announcements and agenda item requests, and that is, those are for agenda item requests and public comments. We then immediately go into our new business, and we'll have public comments on the following business agendas, but before I say that, there is one exception, and that's the runway protection zone. The runway protection zone will take comments during that agenda item, and I've moved it up to the number one position that will follow for a number of reasons, some timing and whatever. And the first thing, though, that we, we will come up with on our new business agenda is a bond award for general obligations. Then we'll go into the town meeting warrant articles. And the first one is, like I said, the protective zone, the runway protection zone zoning bylaw. We then get into four amendments that were provided for, through the, through, three through the planning board, and one from the historical commission. Accelerating dwelling units, excuse me, a mandatory amendment on the floodplain district. Then we have clarification amendment on accessory dwelling unit, accessory dwelling units and structures. Then the final one on that area is with the historic preservation and a bylaw change to that. And then we'll get into 127 Harbor Road, reuse of structures, then Middle Road and two, Middle Road on conservation restriction and surplus of Middle Road. These are two competing, two competing articles. And what I should have said upfront is during the public comment period, I'll, we'll take comments on each of these, but if you're either for one amendment and against the other, or just the reverse. So we're going to take all those comments upfront as one. And then when we get down here into the agenda item, I'll go through this again as we go through this, when we get through the agenda item, the chairs of each of the committees will present to the board, and we'll take comments to both of them, then we'll vote on them separately, unless there's any kind of a restriction on it. Dean, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I wonder if when you have the public comment period, considering the diversity of all these articles, whether you might want to group the public comments according to topics. So for example, on the, on the Middle Road slash Goose Pond, ask those who want to speak to speak at that time.
Yeah.
And then the same with the others. And if someone comes in late, they could speak on anything after that, so we don't want to deprive.
Yeah, that's fine. I was going to do that with the Middle Road, but that makes sense to do them all that way.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dean, that's good. Okay. And then we're going to get into reuse of some home rule petitions. These are petitions that were approved by town meeting last year. However, they haven't been acted on by the legislature, so we have to renew them because they'll expire by the time they get to the legislature this, this summer. And there are three of them. We'll go over that later. And then finally, we're going to re, we're going to do a preliminary look at re, or ordering our, our annual town meeting warrant articles, and we're up in the 60s right now. So it's going to be a, be a fun meeting. Okay. Let's start, and we'll go back, and we're going to start with the minutes of March 8. Do we have any motion to approve? Second.
Second.
Any comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Dean?
I have two small comments. On page eight, the middle paragraph, second to last line, which reads, "They receive the permit revenue." I'd like to add the phrase "as less sore." They receive the permanent, the permit revenue as less sore. And then on page 10, under the executive session, in the fourth line, after the word negotiating, the phrase "and litigating," "and litigating" should be added. That was the motion. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? No? Let's take a vote. Start with Shereen.
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And Chair says aye. Okay. We're going into our public announcements and agenda. I had a request, I had a request to, from the Parade Committee, Independence Day Parade Committee, that they could go first. So Justin, if you're on. Oh, there you are.
Hi, there.
Well, welcome.
Thank you. So we finally have a theme for this year's parade, and the theme for the 2022 Chatham Independence Day Parade is going to be Chatham Salty as Ever.
All right.
This theme was submitted by Diana Hackett Brahman, and she says that she remembers the smell of salt air while growing up in Chatham. She also notes that salty can be applied to all of the hard-working people and workers of Chatham who have survived the last couple of years. We had many great suggestions this year, but the committee felt that it was important to go with kind of a more lighthearted theme this year so that everyone could let loose and have fun with this year's parade. I do want to mention that we did hear the suggestion to revisit our theme of honoring and recognizing women that we originally had in 2020. They got kind of stunted because of the virtual aspect of the parade, and we did discuss that. We do plan on doing so in the near future. So we look forward to seeing everyone on July 4th and seeing how salty they can be.
That's super. I like it. Any, any comments from the board? A lot of thumbs up.
That's a great idea. Thanks.
Thanks very much, Justin.
Thank you.
Get to your meeting.
Thank you.
Take care. All right, let me bring it back to the board. I do have one comment. It's one of these things that you, you see and you say, okay, I'll bring it, I'll mention it. The editors from Yankee Magazine put out something called New England Today, and Chatham was among the 10 best beach towns. Just what, again, nice to know that, but we'll have a lot of people, which is not bad, I would say. But anyway, that's a nice honor to have. Let's see. Anything? Anyway, let me try, anybody from the board? Nope? Okay, Jill, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, just a reminder that we do have COVID test kits at the annex upstairs at the health department, so if anyone would like them, they're free for Chatham residents, and we have plenty available.
Dr. Bob is, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Anyone from the public? Anyone online? You're going to have to help me here because mine doesn't show any order. I don't see anyone, so, okay, let's, we're going to move right ahead with.
The audience?
Pardon?
Did you ask anybody from the audience?
Yeah, I thought so. Not yet. I'll let you, you're getting close. Okay. All right. Now we'll have, thank you. Now we'll have public comments on our business agenda, except for the runway protection zone, and as recommended by Mr. Nacastro, which I like. All right. I'll take, let's, let's, let's start in line. We have, anyone want to speak on the accessory dwelling units? ADU. It's an update to the old bylaw. It went through town meeting. I don't see anyone. Anybody like to speak on the floodplain district? Again, another update required by the FEMA. Yeah, I don't see anyone there. Okay. We have a clarification amendment on accessory building and structures. It's a new definition. Actually, it's needed. I see none there. And then anyone who wants to speak on the protective zoning bylaw for the historic preservation incentive?
Go ahead, Ray.
You have one?
It wasn't, it was a second.
I don't see, who is it?
Frank.
Oh, how could I not know it was Frank Messina? Go ahead, Frank.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. First of all, I read in the paper that you're not going to be seeking another term in office, and then I looked at this agenda, and I guess I know why. But God bless you guys, a lot of work. I just would like to say a couple of words quickly and thank the community development department, Ms. Donovan, Katie Donovan, and specifically, Ally Sabatino. I'm sure she's going to give you a brief presentation of the hard work over the last three or four years on this historic preservation incentives bylaw. And I hope you will accept the positive recommendation and allow us to go forward to town meeting. But again, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Frank. Anyone else? You're probably going to have to help me because it's hard to see you, and it's, okay. Next thing up is 127 Old Harbor Road, the reuse as affordable housing.
Mr. Chair, Mr. West would like to speak.
Hey, Steve, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hello, everybody. My name is Steve West, and I'm from 124 Old Harbor Road, and I'm here to comment on the warrant article for 127. We all agree that Chatham needs more affordable housing, and I know speaking out against this article is like speaking against motherhood and apple pie, but I believe my comments will show this property isn't appropriate for affordable housing for ethical, moral, financial, best usage and legal reasons. First, is this the best usage of the property? And I'm going to let you guys see me so I can be on, on screen.
Sure, we see you.
This is the best property, the, the 127 Old Harbor property has served many purposes since Ms. Ellis passed in 1971. Part of the property was converted into a school playground facility. The home once housed our water department. The barn and the parking areas are currently in use by the town to store lifeguard gear, beach vehicles, emergency spill response equipment, and other items. And through the years, as you're all aware, the property's been considered for many uses, including the skateboard park, Council on Aging Building, Monomoy Community Services Building, and of course, now for affordable housing. Converting this property to affordable housing will eliminate the town's ability to use this property as it's currently being used, and will also eliminate it from consideration for any other future uses, which to me is very concerning since the property is adjacent to the elementary school. The town originally planned to do a property study on, on this property to determine the highest and best use, and that study was not done. Wouldn't a best use study on this valuable, widely-used, centrally-located property be an essential piece of information obtained before deciding how we go forward and use this property? Second, is repurposing this property morally and ethically okay? Is it really the right thing to do? What signal does repurposing this property send to other potential Chatham property donors? My grandfather, Ed Harrington, was the Chatham Selectman Chair when the town acquired this property. He lived where we currently reside and was a neighbor of Ms. Ellis. He was instrumental in convincing Ms. Ellis to change her will with her first and only codicil in 1968 to bequeath the property to the town of Chatham. As you know, her codicil was intentionally very specific. It stated specifically that the whole property, not just part of it, was to be for elementary school playground, and no buildings other than those already there should be placed on the property. My grandfather has often said that getting this property for the benefit of the elementary school and convincing the town to purchase the Golden Triangle were the two most important property and conservation efforts he accomplished during his 11-year selectman term. While Massachusetts law may allow the terms provided in the codicil to expire, is that really the right thing to do less than 50 years later? The third impediment that I want to mention to making this property affordable housing are the potential legal issues. Town council's opinion opined that mass statutes are contradictory in this matter. Additionally, a contract may have been established when the town accepted this property at the special town meeting in November of 1971, and was chaired again by Mr. Harrington. Article one that passed unanimously at that meeting stated that the town accepted the property with the condition and provision that the property, all of it, not part of it, be called the Augustus and Marion Ellis Playground, and that no buildings other than those previously on the site shall be placed on the site. Town councils opined that this acceptance could be considered as a binding contractual agreement, and if that's the case, then any change in usage would require a judicial determination of whether the town is allowed to switch from its original terms of the gift. My last comment, and I know I'm stretching it a little bit, fourth, from a financial standpoint, and I'm going to present this tomorrow at the finance committee meeting, why take a property that's worth upwards of $2 million, surrounded on both sides by historically significant homes, and upon which a historic home already sits, and build one or possibly two affordable housing units? The existing house is subject to a historical commission oversight, and if multiple homes are planned, then complying with zoning board rules will likely also be required, given the article has reduced the property size significantly. Also, the affordable housing guidelines require the housing to fit in with the surrounding houses. All these factors will be significantly increase the cost of creating affordable housing on this property. Wouldn't the town help the affordable housing cause more by selling the property and using the up to $2 million proceeds to develop many more affordable housing units?
Three minutes, Steve.
Bottom line, Chatham needs more affordable housing. We all agree, I agree, but this property isn't the place to do that for the reasons I mentioned: ethical, moral, financial, best use, and legal. Thank you very much.
Okay, I gave you a few seconds. Thank you, Steve.
Appreciate it, thanks. Sorry about that.
That's all right. Let's see, I see Rick Levitt has his hand up.
Thank you, Peter.
Go ahead, Rick.
Steve, I'm just going to bet you a dinner at any restaurant you want in Chatham, that we can put affordable housing in your neighborhood, and you're absolutely going to love it. I hope you'll take me up on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. All right. Now we come.
One more.
There's another one?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, Bill Beistrum. Welcome, Bill.
Hi. The, this has been rehashed and rehashed and rehashed, and last year at the town meeting was overwhelmingly supported. I think we should continue on, on that track that the town has indicated they would like to follow. As you, there's no sense going over the need for affordable housing. We all know we need it. The, the last major plan said we should try to put it in various populations centers around town, and this is certainly one. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Bill. Okay.
Carolyn.
Carolyn's on? Okay, Carolyn, there, I see you.
Yes, yes, hello, Peter, thank you. Just in regards to 127, I'll repeat just what Bill Beistrum just said. We've already voted overwhelmingly in support of this. I'd also like to point out, it's really disingenuous to, to go on and on about the intent of the donor and then suggest that we sell it for millions of dollars and have it developed by private interests. The town's already made the decision on this property, and we need to move forward collectively and develop the best affordable housing we can on the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. See anyone else? I don't, okay. Now we're getting into the, depends on who's writing it, either the Middle Road property or the, the Goose Pond, which is really the same thing, the two competing articles. If everyone could put their hands up who wants to speak. Remind you again that, that this is the time to speak on these two articles. You can be, you know, for one or against another. The other comment I'll make is that we received a number of, of letters on both sides. I tried to answer them all. We had a couple this afternoon that I didn't answer and say, thank you, if I miss you, not, not intended. But during the meeting, the two chairs will be able to speak to the board, and we'll ask questions. No one has, Rick has his hand up. If it's, unless it was up from before, Rick.
No, I want to speak on this one too, Peter.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I want to compliment the Open Space Committee for recommending to place a permanent conservation restriction on the Goose Pond Forest land off, off Middle Road. It's a wise decision, and I support it. Preserving open space is as high a priority as solving Chatham's critical housing shortage. We need not compromise one to achieve the other. What is needed is, is the sustainable housing program you initiated last year, a program based on sound planning principles, staffed with experienced personnel, and adequately financed. This is the model employed in Chatham's successful, long-term wastewater management program. Chatham has enough land to solve its critical housing shortage in already-developed parts of village centers without having to waste valuable open space. I will be talking more about that later tonight when the airport's article is discussed, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick.
Ted Lucas.
Ted, if you'd like to speak. We have someone inside, and I have a hand up from Brett, you'll be next, Brett. Welcome.
And I just want to urge the selectmen to consider the Goose Pond property up there for conservation easement on it. And it'd be just nice if the selectmen could, if you're going to put the, about housing for the, on the town warrant for the town meeting, it'd be nice, maybe we can even have the selectmen recommend putting that property on a town warrant too, and let the voters decide at the town meeting how we want to preserve that piece of property, what we want to do with it. And it's, it's, it's a valuable piece of property, and I think it should be preserved for all of, all the citizens of the town of Chatham for, forever. I think it's the best thing we can do for our, our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I see Brett, Brett, tally your hands. Welcome, Brett. I don't know if you're on mute. I don't, we don't see you, Brett.
Want to come back to him?
Yeah, we have another hand up.
Kristen Andrews?
Okay. Let me, Brett, while you're trying, or whatever, let me go to Kristen. Kristen Andrews. Welcome, Kristen.
Hi, thank you so much. Kristen Andrews in West Chatham, and obviously, I want to speak in favor of the conservation restriction article on Goose Pond Forest, the last 19 acres there. You know, while we'd like to always think that a compromise is the way to go to make everybody happy and try to solve problems, I think in this case, it's short-sighted because it's really in the best interest of the vitality of the forest. And while it's cliche to say preserving land and conservation is really about the future and those of us that come after, so I would urge us to protect this land and all of us work, I'm sure we can come up with some creative ways to address our housing crisis and look at it as a holistic effort and looking at all of the interests. And I, I know that there's, I've heard many people in the land protection community offer their assistance and haven't been taken up on it, but I, I hope that we can look at it in a more, the housing crisis in a more it in a more, the housing crisis in a more of a holistic manner while preserving our wilding areas, because once they're developed, we're never going to get them back. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen.
Brett Tully's back.
Pardon?
Brett is, is back.
It's Brett? Okay, Brett. I see Tracy.
Want to come back?
Okay, looks like we're coming up, but, yep, we don't see him. I'm gonna try again, but we have Tracy Cannon on. Welcome, Tracy. Is that because of the different connections? No.
Hi.
Hi, welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep, we do.
Can you hear us?
Hey, guys, is it our side or is it their side? IT, huh? No? We're okay.
Frank Messina has his hand up as well. Frank?
Are you calling?
All right, I hear you, Frank. There we go.
I guess my camera's not working, so you can't see my face. Anyway, just quickly, if I may, Mr. Chairman, a quick clarification. Some of us are not following this as closely as others, but as you said, two competing warrant articles.
Right.
The conservation restriction is a conservation restriction on the total property, and the second one, surplus portions, oh, is that a bit of a compromise where you want to use just a portion of the property?
Yeah, there's 19 acres that was, that's municipal property, has been for a little while, of the total of about almost 70, I think, total that's there if you add the 19.
She started walking on March 6th, and she's down.
Oh, here, okay, anyway, yes, one portion of it, about five acres or so.
Four acres.
Four acres, that's right. Four acres of it is, was a compromise. This came from the affordable, the, I always forget that, I want to say Affordable Housing Committee. It's the Chousing Housing Authority.
Partnership.
Yeah, Chouse, I apologize, Carolyn, Chatham Housing Partnership, as a compromise for putting some affordable housing there. And the other article says, "Make it all conservation land."
Okay, if I, just one other question and clarification. So, the, the land, whatever amount of land, whether it is compromised, can, does this article indicate it'll be multifamily housing and not single-family housing?
Yeah, it's for affordable housing.
No, multifamily versus the single-family?
Well, we, you know, it'll be family housing, be affordable housing.
It hasn't been determined yet.
Yeah, right, I mean, we haven't determined whether, you could have small individual habitat for humidity houses, they're single-family housings, but they're, they're small affordable housing. Or you could have multifamily. That, that'll be determined at the time.
I would support it if, in fact, there is a clarification on this warrant article indicating that it would be for multifamily housing and not single-family housing. You guys are doing hard work to try and solve the problem. You're never going to solve the problem with single-family housing, and that's the way I, I would support it. Otherwise, I don't think I could. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, Brett's on the phone at 718-577.
Okay, Brett, I guess you're on the phone. Welcome.
All right, do you have my audio now?
Yes.
All right, thank you so much. I apologize for the delay, thank you, Chair. Do you think that I'd have figured this out by now, how to use the video? I appreciate the conversation. I, I want to speak tonight in support of housing at Middle Road. I would like to start by thanking the Select Board for your leadership last year when the article on Middle Road was proposed. The board voted unanimously to advance it to town meeting, and that was for the two-plot proposal to develop housing on about five acres in one section of the Middle Road area, and then about three acres on another. And I know that the Finance Committee also voted unanimously, so appreciate all that leadership, and just wanted to build off what one of the previous speakers mentioned about letting the voters decide, and just recognize that last year at town meeting, when the vote came up on developing eight acres of housing at Middle Road, the town voted in majority to advance that proposal, however, did not make the two-thirds majority required. I just want to acknowledge that moving in this direction to develop at least some housing at Middle Road is clearly the will of Chatham voters, so I just want to recognize, again, like, support the board in listening to what Chatham voters have already said, and acknowledge that it wasn't a two-thirds majority last year, but the proposal at hand reduces what was a two-plot proposal down to one, that's only four acres now. So, again, just, you know, this, the proposal on the table is very much a compromise, and both acknowledges what the Chatham voters have already voiced, and the direction that we want to go. So, thank you again for the time. I appreciate your leadership, thank you.
Thank you, Brett. Okay, see, Tracy's hand is up. Welcome back, Tracy. Hopefully we got you.
Hi, sorry.
There you are.
Sorry. A little bit of a, little bit of kerfuffle last time. Peter, thank you very much. I just, I just, I have a lot of things I want to say, but I won't say all of them. I just, I feel that I come to the, this entire discussion with a unique perspective. I have people in my office every day, I have phone calls every day. I had two mothers, two mothers today come in to my office, and both of them burst into tears in the middle of my, my chatting with them, trying to help them. They had been told by their landlords that they needed to be out by April 1st. Both are Chatham residents, both have children in the Chatham school system. That's one day. This is one day in my office, and these are hardworking. One was a single mom, another was a mom whose husband is a, is a mason who's been working on Nantucket. And I, I feel that the dising, the, the word disingenuous regarding everybody, everybody that is talking about this beautiful, beautiful land, and I walk conservation land every single day, I walk conservation land. I, I think to say that you really are behind housing, but just not this piece, you know, and, and we, we've come to this entire thing, the Housing Partnership, with all good faith, and we, we absolutely understand. We're all, we all love, we all love this little sandbar that we live on. We all love, we all love the land, and we want to, we want to preserve it, and we want to take care of it. But we also really love our town, and we want our town to continue to grow and to flourish. And without families, you can't do that. You can't, you can't move on, you can't expand your elementary school, you can't, you have to have families. And if you have no place to put those families, then we're, then there's no, then there's nowhere to go. It's going to be a very pretty, very protected piece of, piece of property, but it's, it's, it's not gonna, it's not gonna, it's not gonna be able to, to move on. And the last thing that I would say is, the last time I was there walking with my dogs, you know, I was blown away by the amount of garbage and just, you know, it's clear that this beautiful property that we, you know, we all want to save is already being neglected. And I feel like, I feel like if, if we could be good stewards of it, and we could use some of it, just a small portion of it, for housing, and then the rest we could protect, we might be able to keep it and keep it safe and be able to, be able to give some families some shelter. And I, that's, that's, that's my thought on it. So, thank you for listening, and thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Tracy, you made three minutes. Okay, uh, let's see, do we have anyone else? I saw another hand up. You see anything?
Did I, did I sound like an idiot?
No. No, I put myself on mute.
No, yeah. Tracy, you have to go on mute and shut off your camera. Oh, maybe she can't hear me. Okay, that took care of, all right, anything else? Do you see anyone else?
No.
All right, thank.
You have Jack Farrell here, but did you want the chairs to speak during the?
Oh, during, during the agenda item. Yeah.
Did you get that, Jack?
It's going to be during the agenda item. Jack, will we get down? We're gonna, you can speak during the agenda item, you don't have to speak now.
Okay, I guess I'm confused. I was first told that it would be much later in the evening.
It is.
And then I turned on channel 18, and I heard Middle Road Goose Pond.
Yeah, but this is for public comments, you're going to be on with us during the agenda item.
I'm gonna go ahead, yeah.
But you're more than welcome to stay. Thank you. Okay, um, let's go. We're down to our, we're down to the refile of our Home Rule petitions. Establishing a new housing trust, establish a real property transfer fee to fund affordable attainable housing, and use of Community Preservation Act funds for affordable housing. Do I have any comments on any one of those three? I see none here.
You have the hand up.
Pardon?
Hand up.
Okay. Do I miss, I missed it. All right, Carolyn. Go ahead, Carolyn.
Yes, yes, hello, thank you, Peter. I'm not sure where you are, where you are on all those items. I just wanted to impress that I, I hope you're separating the, the Home Rule petition that has the housing trust on it, where you're asking for the increased AMI and also asking to reconfigure the trust, and I would just really like that to be two separate requests so that the reconfiguring of the trust should be a pretty easy thing for them to do, and if you put them together, they're going to get hung up in all the different committees that they have to put the AMI issue through.
What you're saying is, yeah, Carolyn, that's the first one on here, is establish a new housing trust. The housing trust has an affordable house, I mean, affordable housing trust funding money, and then it also has a, a special reserve fund for 200% of AMI. You're saying, take that 200% AMI and do it separately, or ignore it?
Yeah, I just think it, it should be two separate Home Rule petitions. One should be asking if we can reconfigure the trust, and the other one should be asking about the increased AMI. And that way, they can just kind of rubber stamp the reconfiguring of the trust, because that's not going to be a big issue, but the re, doing, changing the AMI is a big issue, and they're going to have to keep cycling that through different committees. So, why don't we let them figure that out, but we could still move ahead and reconfigure the housing trust? Those are my thoughts.
Okay.
Thank you.
I got it. Thank you. Thanks. You see, anybody see any others?
Frank Messina.
Welcome back, Frank.
Thank you very much. Just a quick question, clarification. Your item, Roman numeral 5, 3, use of Community Preservation Acts for attainable housing versus the law, the way it's currently constructed, which is only affordable housing. Was there any action taken by the legislature last year?
No. A lot of discussion, and I, a number of us went, well, we didn't go, we did it virtually, we, we testified before the committees, but no.
Okay, so, so this is, this is again, one more time, because it has to be refiled, and, and is this, is this a request for the, the whole act, the Community Preservation Act, to be changed? That's what you're asking for, if I understand it.
Community Preservation Act, Dean, you want to?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Frank, this is a Home Rule petition to amend as to the town of Chatham only.
Ah-huh.
The, the Community Preservation Act so that funds, CPA funds can be used not just for affordable housing, but for attainable housing. So, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be of statewide application. It's limited to Chatham.
Is that possible, being the Community Preservation Act is a statewide act?
Yes, the legislature could enact a special act for the, for the town of Chatham, or for any town, if they wanted to.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I'm, as you know, because we've spoke about it, I'm, I'm not for that. I think the Community Preservation Act is already being used in certain ways that is depleting it, and affordable housing was the original intent, and if, in fact, the state legislature wants to change the act, you know, on a statewide basis, that's a larger discussion rather than just Chatham. So, anyway, that's my, that's my view. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank. I don't see anyone else. Do you have anyone? They didn't, okay. Uh, let's see, where were we? We got that, and then preliminary ordering of the annual town meeting warrant, that's ours. Okay, let's go back to the agenda. First thing on our business agenda item is the general obligation bonds, and Alex, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ah, yes, good afternoon, everyone. Here to have the board approve a sale of general obligation bonds. We received, first of all, we went out for refinancing of the 2012 obligation bonds, and that was for, again, in 2012, and we also had $900,000 of new money for certain items, mostly for the wastewater project. We did receive, prior to issuing the bonds, we had a ratings review call with S&amp;P, our ratings agency, and again, pleased to report that the town's AAA bond rating was reaffirmed by Standard and Coors on March 7th with a stable outlook. And attached to your agenda report is a copy of the ratings issued by Standard and Coors, and I just want to point out that they were very happy with our preliminary planning and assessment in regards to climate resiliency efforts and to identify project funding to mitigate some of those risks. This was also the third rating, sort of under the COVID-19 pandemic, so as we're coming out of that, and they had mentioned, Standard and Coors had mentioned in the past, they were pleased with our reaction to COVID, and also with the reserves that we built up during the pandemic. So, just to recap, that we did go out to bid. We received three bids for these obligation bonds, with a true interest cost ranging from 2.178% to 2.19%. And Piper Sandler and Company submitted the winning bid at 2.177%, and that included a premium of $1,473,297.95, which will go to reduce the principal of the bonds as well as pay for all the closing costs. And so, that's how we come down to the true interest cost of 2.187, and the bond issuance of $11,675,000. And just to note that the obligation bonds of 2012 had a true interest cost of 2.869%. And so, over the life of the loans, that provides savings of $1,453,558, and we have not extended the maturity date of any of those loans. So, in your packet, we have the vote of the Board of Select, Selectmen, and, I'm sorry, the vote of the Select Board that you will need to sign and approve, as well as some other items that do require your wet signature, so to speak. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, thank you, Alex. I just have a, a question that I think I know the answer, but maybe for the public. We're, we're hearing about all the interest rates that are rising, especially over the last three or four months, and yet here we have a decrease in our, in the amount, of course, it's a number of years ago that we had the other one. How come?
Again, when we issued the bonds back in 2012, I think we had anticipated about 3.25%. So, as you know, over the past few years, the economy has rebounded from the recession, interest rates really went, plummeted for a long time, so they were very low and very favorable for municipalities. But this is one of the reasons why we wanted to have these, refund these bonds, actually prior to March 15th today, knowing that the Federal Reserve was going to be meeting and that interest rates were likely to rise.
Okay, thank you. I know we said this once before, but not only is it a triple bond rating, it's a, it's an excellent report overall for the town, and for, to you and town manager and their staff, it's just an excellent job to get an audit report like that, it's outstanding. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alex, I just had a question on the vote. In the schedule, it shows interest rates running from 3% to 4% and 5%. How does that square with the, the 2.1? Just, can you clarify what's happening there?
Yeah, that's the coupon rate for each of them, and as it goes, it's, it's a calculation. So, in the current 2012 bonds had the same coupon rates, very similar, because I did review those prior to...
How does that square with the, the 2.1? Just, can you clarify what's happening there?
Yeah, that's the coupon rate for each of them, and as it goes, it's, it's a calculation. So in the current 2012 bonds have the same coupon rates, very similar, because I did review those prior to doing the agenda report. But again, with the true interest, with the net premium and then the true interest costs coming down, it is the 2.187, even though the coupon rates are larger, because again, it's just a different, it's, it's only a portion of that amount. I'm not sure if that answers your question or not.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alex and Jill, good job. We're going to save $1.4 million, almost $1.5 million going forward, so I just think it's super. And I respectfully recommend that we award the $11,675,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2022 bonds dated March 9th, 2022, to Piper Sandler and Company in accordance with the terms set forth in the attached bid and the notice of sale dated March 9th, 2022 relating to the bonds and as detailed in the attached vote of the select board.
Thank you, Jeff, a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, let's take a vote. I'll start back there with Jeff.
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
Okay, we now get into our protective zoning bylaw amendments. And the first one up, as the amendment to the protective zoning bylaw, runway protection zone, overlay district. Let me, okay, it looks like it's Terry, I guess, right? I saw Ally up, but it's Terry. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. If, I'm going to share my screen here. And again, in your package, you had an overview of the.
Terry, you're muted.
Thank you. And hopefully everybody can see my screen. I apologize for that. So, so again, in your package this evening, you have some background materials, but I'm going to hopefully hit the high points, again, for the discussion informational purposes. So tonight, again, the primary request here is for the placement of the proposed runway protection zone overlay district, the draft zoning article that the select board had referred to the planning board to a hearing, which had occurred, public hearing, which had occurred last night. And tonight's requested action is to place the article on the warrant. So very quickly, tonight's presentation is going to focus on four primary areas, the airport commission's land use planning obligations, what is a runway protection zone, where are the RPZs, and then the actual proposed draft warrant article. So as many of the members of the select board are, are aware of the process and some of the concerns raised by the public regarding compliance with various grant assurances, I just want to highlight these bullets on how the Federal Aviation Administration is involved in, in the operation and funding of the airport. So the Chatham Municipal Airport was established as a municipal airport in 1949 with the support of federal and state funding, and it's continued to access grant funding to complete various airport safety improvements and projects up to the present. So these agreements that are associated with the acceptance of these grants are called grant assurances, and these grant assurances are best characterized as a contractual obligation. The land uses around the airport are to be planned and implemented in a way that ensure compatibility with the airport and its operations. Ensuring compatible land uses near federally obligated airports is an important responsibility and an interest issue of federal interest. So the FAA jurisdiction, and again, we're limiting our discussion this evening to the ground, not, not the air. So the federal FAA jurisdiction is limited to the airport properties or federal land. So for the Chatham Municipal Airport, this is basically limited to the boundary of the airport property. So clearly, land use occurs outside of the property. But what is stated in these items, again, going back to grant assurances, that the airport commission and the town as a sponsor needs to meet these conditions and is obligated to advocate for compatible land use. And, and more specifically, again, the airport commission does not have the authority or jurisdiction to control land uses outside the airport property. It does have an obligation under the Federal Grant Assurance 21. So this is compatible land use, which is implementing Title 49 USC, which is United States Code, Section 47107, A10, which requires in part that the need to take appropriate action to the extent reasonable, including the adoption of zoning bylaws to restrict the use of land adjacent to or in the immediate vicinity of the airport to activities and purposes compatible with normal airport operations, including landing and takeoff of aircraft. So basically, this request, you know, the intent of this request is for the airport commission meeting that obligation and advocating for the town to adopt zoning control consistent with criteria outlined in the Federal Aviation Administration Advisory Circular AC-5300-13. And this is again, the goal of that circular is to promote compatible land uses with Chatham's two RPZs moving forward from the point of adoption of the proposed zoning bylaw amendment. Just a quick, quick refresher on what is a runway protection zone? So the runway protection zone is a protective two-dimensional zone, and it's on the ground, and it's intended to provide an area that is free of above-ground obstructions. In Chatham, the RPZ is a trapezoidal ground surface area that starts 200 feet from the end of the runway. So that's from the end of the pavement, is 250 foot, feet wide at its base, extends 1,000 feet out along the center line with an end width of 45, excuse me, 450 feet. So Chatham's two RPZs are indicated on the current FAA-approved airport layout plan and are serving as the basis for this overlay district. So these districts do exist on, in the, on the airport layout plan, and this proposal is proposing to incorporate or integrate that into the zoning bylaw. So some of the primary objectives of an RPZ include promoting overall safety, protecting people and property on the ground, minimizing injury to aircraft occupants, preventing creation of hazards to flight, discouraging incompatible land uses, and noise mitigation. So in Chatham, as I mentioned, there are two RPZs. So these both handle approaches and departures. So there is one located at the runway six end, which is the southwestern corner here. And there is also in the northeastern corner, there is the runway end portion of the RPZ. So again, if this handles both, both these RPZs handle arriving aircraft for six, departures for six, arrivals for two-four, and departures for two-four. So more specifically, this graphic shows the, the runway six end, and again, just to highlight the dimensions, you see the offset from the edge of the pavement is 200 feet, you know, and then centered on the center line, so this is 250 feet, extending out 1,000 feet to a outer width of 450 feet. On the runway two-four end, those same dimensions hold, again, as described in the, the draft bylaw. And art. So for, for consistency, this article's structure is based upon the South Chatham Overlay District article, and it consists of three primary sections, and it's, it's to amend the zoning map. So we have three different activities going on within the article. It, it's to amend the zoning map, to actually create a section within the protective zoning bylaw for an RPZ overlay district section, and then finally, the actual specifications of the RPZ overlay district. And, and the format is more modeled on the Water Resource Protection District overlay format. So the, so the details of the bylaw include the first section, and this is under F, would be runway protection zone overlay district. The purpose is stated, and I'm going to read the purpose, and I'll summarize the bullet points in the interest of time. The RPZ overlay district is intended to regulate the use, development, and design of the property, design of property within the RPZs for the runway six and runway two-four ends of the Chatham Municipal Airport, as indicated in the approved airport layout plan, by preventing the establishment or expansion of uses, structures, and vegetation, which constitute hazards or obstructions, or would be vulnerable to impact from aircraft operating to, from, or near the airport. B, allowing for appropriate uses surrounding the airport to enhance protection of people and property on the ground, and promoting compatible land use to maximize public safety. So the locational section cross-references the zoning map, zoning map amendment that was included in the draft article. So again, this basically just references that map. It, it goes through, again, the description of the, the geometry of, of the RPZ. And just want to point out that the date referenced here is for, for town meeting. If this were to be approved by town meeting, that would be the date, that would be on the zoning map, and that's why that date differs from the map in the article. So an overlay district was, was a tool that was discussed and proposed to be employed here as, as a tool to basically preserve existing uses while meeting some of the goals of the RPZ protection of future, preventing future uses that could potentially conflict with the, you know, the, the goals of the RPZ, as I highlighted earlier, and are more specifically stated in the advisory circular. So section three here is permitted uses, basically states any use permitted in the underlying zoning district pursuant to Appendix 1 Schedule Use of Regulations shall be permitted except for those uses specifically prohibited in section F4 below. So this is really the, transitioning here to section four, which is the prohibited uses section, which is really the, the teeth, if you will, of the bylaw. And the intent here is to implement the provisions of the advisory circular regarding runway protection zone. So the prohibited uses here are spelled out with A being residential use, E being retail, commercial, industrial, school, institutional, and religious uses to the extent that prohibition and or regulation of such uses is permitted under the provisions of General Law 48, Section 3, and/or any other applicable provision of the law, landfill, storage facilities, and uses that attract wildlife, which significantly increase the potential for interference of waterborne, airborne foul and landing, with landing and departing aircraft, destruction activities, and land uses which produce smoke and or dust in such a manner as to impair visibility of pilots using the airport. E, high-intensity exterior lighting, including but not limited to lighting for signage, private drives, parking lots, security, located or positioned in such a manner as to impair the visibility of pilots assist, using the airport unless lighting is properly shielded. Paragraph F, land uses which create electrical interference as determined by the Federal Aviation Administration with aircraft navigational signals or radio communication, construction or erection or installation of structures with heights exceeding the limits established in the Chatham General Bylaw, Chapter 100, airport approach protection, and finally, uses or structures creating glare unless they have been reviewed favorably using the FAA's Notice Criteria Tool based on the scope of the project as it relates to 14 CFR Part 77.9 and received clearance on Form 7460, excuse me, 7460-1 perceived by the, the town. So that's an obstruction analysis that certain projects need to, to go through. And finally, you know, clearly, this, this, this article proposes or results in, would, if passed, would result in the creation of pre-existing non-conforming uses. Section, you know, section six of the zoning act provides some relief on that, and I'm going to go over that in a second, but the final paragraph of the, the bylaw is the procedure for change of use. This statement indicates that any change in use of land or structures located in the RPZ shall require a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals pursuant to Section 8C and shall comply with all other applicable provisions of the bylaws. So this is just in, in there to include acknowledgement that that's a path available for certain projects. And again, this, that, this, this section really derives its authority, if you will, from the mass, mass general laws, Chapter 48, Section 6, non-conformity. So really, it provides that a zoning bylaw shall not apply to structural, structural uses lawful in existence, lawfully begun, or to a building or special permit issued before the first publication notes of the hearing of such ordinance applied. So with that, I'll prefer, or send it back to the chair for any questions, or if you're going to go to Ally for what from last night, I believe Chairman Harrison here as well from the Airport Commission.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Terry. Just make a comment. We have our town council on until 7:30. It's one. Pretty good shape there. Like he mentioned, Huntley's on to, to also speak if we need to. I have a comments I'm going to make at the end, I think, and I know Dean has a point, and Corey, and then we can go to the public or whatever. And everybody does. Okay, let me, Dean was first, Corey, Shereen, and then Jeff. How's that? Did I get you, Jeff, or did I get you? Or, okay. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand that this proposal emanates from the recommendation of Town Council, Mr. Costello, and if he's on the call, or if, and/or if Special Counsel to the Airport Commission, Mr. Mackey is on the call, I'd like to hear from them, and acknowledging that Special Counsel is also complimentary Town Council to the town. So it would be helpful, I think, if we heard that, what, what the reasoning was behind this, even before we hear from what the planning board has to say. That's my suggestion.
Pat? I don't, I don't see the other Town Council, the special Town Council. Welcome, Pat.
Good, good evening, members of the board. Attorney Macarios is actually on, on the line as well, so if we need any input from, from him, I'm sure he'd be willing to contribute. This bylaw proposal, Dean, came up approximately a year ago. I was presented with a concept for adopting RPZ zoning in accordance with the FAA guidance and advisories. We reviewed it in conjunction with the Airport Commission. We had a couple of meetings with the planning board. It was determined that approximately nine, 10 months ago, to propose an overlay bylaw in conjunction with the West Chatham Neighborhood rezoning initiative that was ongoing. That was the approach that was taken. Terry prepared the, the heart and soul of the bylaw, or as it's presented here today, as he noted, based on other provisions of town bylaws. And we believe it's appropriate based on the, the clear advisory and guidance or policy that the FAA has adopted with respect to land uses within runway protection zones. As we've discussed on prior occasions, there are several alternative options available to a town to secure appropriate compatible land uses within runway protection zones. The most forceful, if you will, would be the acquisition of interests of land in fee, buying the land outright and maintaining it as open space in conjunction with the use of the airport. Secondly, we could acquire easements in property that would limit the uses and ability to develop structures on property, again, for compatibility with airport use. Thirdly, and perhaps most common, in many. Thirdly, and perhaps most common in many scenarios where airports are located within communities, is the adoption of land use regulations, notably zoning ordinances of bylaws, that limit the uses allowed within the runway protection zones based upon the recommendations that the FAA has issued. As Terry had noted, the grant assurances that the town has committed itself to, in conjunction with various grants that is received, specifically Grant Assurance Number 21, does require the town to undertake reasonable efforts to maintain compatible land uses adjacent to the airport. That's, in essence, what this bylaw proposal is. It's an effort to bring ourselves into compliance with the policy that the FAA has established, in compliance with the contractual obligations that the town has assumed in the grant obligations. And the Airport Commission has endeavored to present this bylaw to the town for its review and for potential adoption at town meeting in an effort to comply with clearly what the FAA wishes the community to do in this particular situation. As of right now, there are no real restrictions or limitations on the types of uses, on the types of structures that can, the RPZ areas can be devoted to. So, this proposed bylaw would, as Terry had noted, preserve those uses and structures that are there now in their current state. There would be grandfathered as pre-existing non-conforming uses and structures on the property. They were in existence prior to the effective date of the zoning bylaw, thus they would be permitted legally to continue in that state. But it would prohibit any new uses that are within the prohibition list in the bylaw. Those particularly uses are uses that tend to congregate people, or are development, or other activities that could be hazardous to aircraft travel in and out of the Chatham Airport. The bylaw also contains a provision that does allow for the Zoning Board of Appeals to issue a special permit to allow a change in use of property within the RPZ in conjunction with the standards of the bylaw and the standards set forth generally in the bylaw for special permits. So, that in a nutshell is the basis and the core provisions of the bylaw, and I'm happy to answer any further questions.
Yeah, thank you, Pat. Dean has a question.
Thank you, Pat. If the town were not to adopt this bylaw, would there be any legal or contractual liability to the FAA with respect to the grant assurances or otherwise? And my second question is, was your opinion or advice or comment that you just made and what you're about to say communicated to the Planning Board before they took their action last night, which is what we're about to hear on? Thank you.
We, I certainly attended a couple of meetings with the Planning Board. We did have an informational meeting a few weeks back. We had another joint meeting between the Airport Commission and the Planning Board several months ago. All of these issues were discussed. All of these issues were vetted in terms of potential liability of the town, et cetera. In my view, our liability is somewhat hypothetical at this point. It really depends on to what degree, if at all, the FAA decides to enforce, or stringently enforce, the grant assurances. I do not think that the current state of affairs is consistent with FAA policy. I certainly do not believe that the lack of any type of zoning restriction or regulation within the RPZ is favorably viewed by the FAA. What, if any, action they would intend to take to enforce or compel the town to take affirmative steps in this regard would be mere speculation, and I don't think it's appropriate for me to go there. I do believe that the FAA has had communications with the town, Airport Commission, and its staff relative to its concerns in this regard. But to bluntly answer your question, Dean, if we were not to adopt this bylaw at the upcoming town meeting or at any time in the near future, I don't believe there's any immediate trigger there for liability. However, we clearly have warning, we have had advanced notice, that the FAA would certainly prefer, in conjunction with its well-established policy and guidance, that certain limitations or restrictive measures be adopted by the town to preclude further growth in population of the RPZ areas.
Thank you, Dean. Who'd I have? Cory and then Shereen? Yeah. Cory, just a minute. Attorney Macarios, you had your hand up for a minute, then it's down. I just want to recognize you, even if you don't want to speak. Welcome, Mina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to just let you know I was here when you were asking earlier, and so far, I have nothing to add to what Attorney Costello said. I agree with every word of what was just said.
Okay. Thank you very much. Sorry, Cory.
Thank you, Peter. No, I just want to follow up on Sloman Nikastro's question about if we weren't to act on this at all, or if we were to delay it for a year. Now, I watched the public hearing on the Planning Board last night. There was significant input from a variety of parties, had they had, you know, their issues and concerns about this proposal. Some may have merit, some may not. You know, that is part of the process. Now, the Airport Commission, as we've just currently mentioned, has an obligation to advocate for a compatible land use. Thus, this is where these articles coming from. Listening to the public hearing last night and all the concerns that were voiced, and then the final vote by the Planning Board of a 1, 3, 2 vote, one in favor, three opposed, two abstain, they're basically taking no position. You know, I've served on the Planning Board for many years, and reading the room, I wouldn't give it a snowball's chance of passing if we move it forward as presented. So, my question, or my thought is, is this more appropriate to give back to the Planning Board? There were some comments by some of the members that, you know, who have the background, who have the desire to see this through, but the current product is not in, you know, from their position, or at least my read from their comments was not ready for primetime. It could be. It could be addressed. The concerns could be addressed. Those individuals who have concerns about some of the proposals may, with more conversation, education, whatever, see things in a different light. They may not. But my read from last night's Planning Board public hearing is that if we push this, if we move this forward, it will fail. It will falter. And then where does that leave us, which Attorney Costello kind of mentioned, we're not going to be pressed on it, but I don't know what the best path forward is. So, I'm leaning more in the direction of giving this back to the Planning Board and see if we can vet this out for maybe next town meeting. Maybe that's too optimistic even. But I'm very concerned if we move this forward with the temperature of last night's public hearing that we're setting this up for failure. So, those are my initial thoughts right now. We'll talk more about process and content, but the read from that meeting last night gives me pause.
Shereen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question was to Pat earlier, would have been about the appeals process, and he spelled that out. But I just wanted to ask, so the public would know, how many properties will be impacted by the RPZ? Terry, can you answer that?
Actually, I don't have that number handy, but just looking, Ally, I don't know if you have that number. My understanding is properties were noticed, but...
Maybe it's just an approximation, just...
Yeah, well, I just counted 14 on the runway two, four end, and on the runway six end, Also, so it looks like 14 on both, and I'm excluding the airport, excuse me, 15 on the runway six end, and I'm excluding the airport property because it does straddle the airport property.
Okay.
And not all of those are entirely, basically, they just have some portion of the RPZ bisecting it.
It looks, you can see it on the map. I just didn't know specifically how many were impacted.
But I'll confirm the precise number.
Thank you, Terry. I'm fine for now, and I'll wait if I have any other comments.
Okay. Jeffrey?
Thank you, Peter, and thanks for the presentation, Terry. Just so I'm well-grounded, excuse the metaphor, in the facts here. The FAA is not pressuring us to do this. We've lived with this for quite a while, with that same trapezoid, I think, if I understand correctly, baked into the airport, airport plan that they have. But we don't currently have an RPZ in town. We don't have an RPZ on either end of that runway, that there's no runway protection. And putting one in place would allow structures and folks that have property there as developed today or tomorrow, whenever this would pass in May, if, assuming it would pass. You could, you're grandfathered as to your use and the nature of your structure and the use of your property. However, if you wanted to change it, you'd have to go to the ZBA and get a special permit. You'd have to get an appeal. So, that practically, is that, is that a good understanding of what the practicality that this RPZ, should we adopt it, this zoning bylaw, how it would play out in the future? Folks, grandfather today, but if you wanted to do anything with your home, or, for example, Ocean State wanted to put on a second floor, or if they wanted to expand, et cetera, they'd have to get a special permit. Is that correct, Pat and Terry?
True, Mr. Chairman. Yes, that is correct.
So, and if I also understand correctly, and I did not watch the Planning Board, but that is a negative vote. It's a lukewarm at best, negative, in fact. So, I'm, to be honest with you, I'm not comfortable, you know, voting for this going forward without it being more fully vetted, more fully baked. I just, I'm just not comfortable. I want the town to understand what it means. I want the folks that could be affected in that, in those zones to understand exactly what it means for their property. So, I'm, you know, and then it negates any potential development, any kind of more dense development that we might come up with in that, in that area as well. So, I'm probably not going to support it this evening going forward. I have misgivings, major misgivings about this one.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? I'll just make a couple of comments. Pat, just to answer this question, you've mentioned it before, and this is the crux to the problem for me, very simple. Pat, who has the decision-making, who's the decider on what gets done with the RPZ? Is it the town? Is it the Airport Commission? Is it the state? Or is it FAA? Or, you know, federal, what is there, federal law that requires that? Simple, what? Who's going to have to make a decision if we want to, you know, change anything that has to do with the RPZ, or if we want to make any kind of changes to air operations? I want to start from there.
It would be the town, Mr. Chairman. The town's the sponsor of the airport, it's the owner of the airport property. It is, as a governmental entity, assumes control over the airport operations, and it is committed to abide by federal law, federal regulations, and grant assurances that relate to the airport. Now, as we've discussed on numerous occasions before, the town acts by and through its Airport Commission under the provisions of Chapter 90. So, the Airport Commission is the body that initiated this proposed zoning bylaw amendment by preparing the bylaw, submitting it to appropriate town boards, i.e. the Select Board and the Planning Board, for their respective reviews and actions on the bylaw. So, that's how the process works under state law, and that's what we're in the midst of right now.
Yeah, I understand what you said, but my question, Attorney Macarios, go ahead. I see your hand up.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, perhaps this is what you were going to clarify, and I guess I would just add to that, that it, I understand your question to mean who decides where an RPZ as a matter of federal law and aviation safety is, and who decides where planes fly, essentially.
That's correct.
And that is not within the town's authority. For better or for worse, that is the FAA's authority. In one of the things, and I, having participated in last night's Planning Board meeting, I think is worth clarifying, some of the objections, as I heard them, are that there may be other ways to have the RPZ, for instance, be on the airport property, or to shorten the runway, or to, I think that the phrase sort of pulled the RPZ onto the airport. All of those things, if they were permitted at all, would be permitted by the FAA, and the direction that aircraft fly, or where they land, or what they land over, is entirely within FAA's control. The latter, the where they fly over, is entirely within FAA's control. That first one, how long a runway is, airports may ask FAA. It is exceedingly rare for FAA, especially where federal dollars have been spent, to grant any changes in runways, and the runway in Chatham is not particularly long. But as I, I know it's not before you tonight, but I know there may be other proposals out there to limit types of aircraft, or to ask the town to commit to shortening the runway. None of those things are within the town's control to do without FAA approval, which is rarely granted because it's a matter of their independent jurisdiction. So, that's, it's important to know that the RPZs, those trapezoids, are where they are and are likely to be where they are, and place limitations and safety concerns on uses within them, regardless of whether there is zoning or not. The idea and the reason FAA encourages zoning for RPZs is to give predictability and to let property owners know what is a compatible and non-compatible land use. But then, and maybe this is what Attorney Costello was referring to, the decision that by the special permit granting authority would remain with the ZBA if a use were permitted or not within the RPZ, or an extension of a use.
Thank you, Mina. I see Huntley's hands up, but wait a minute, Huntley, I'm going to go through a couple things first, and then I can get back to you. Okay? That's basically my concern. I know, I mean, you look around, how many people have worked with FAA? And I have. I've had to do something similar to this a number of years ago. And I understand the concerns that the town has, and if the, you know, especially what I saw on the Planning Board, I sat through, I didn't sit through the whole thing last night, I had to get off before they voted. But the two meetings before that, there were the same kind of issues that were being brought up, same kind of issues. And there's, and I'll call it, there was a lot of confusion, there was a lot of misinformation, there was a lot of hyperbole, and I'll take it on both sides, all right? But the point is, my point, and I've tried to make this point three years ago, where I said we should get together and try to do something. If we're going to do something, we have to go to the decision-maker. I know there are two citizens petitions out there. We're not going to talk to those tonight. You can talk generally about them, which is fine, but it's not on our agenda specifically. So, here's, here, I'm going to, just a couple of things. If I was on the Planning Board and I was looking at this, this is, to me, is a simple request, and it's a request that's being forwarded by another agency, almost like what we get from the flood plain, from FEMA. It's a federal request that comes through our Airport Commission, and it's to put an RPZ out there. The RPZ is there. It's, the FAA has said that they understand, and I'm going to, I'm going to read just a couple of things. In 2016, there was a decision, decision, opinion provided to individuals who made 30, 40 requests to FAA. This is during the time of our skydiving incidents. And FAA came back with language you'll be familiar with, we talked about before, and it says, although residential development around airports is not generally compatible with normal airport operations, the town has implemented a number of actions, including the... including the adoption of approach projections, and I'm not going to go through more, all right, and departure areas. They end up with, appropriate action, including the adoption of zoning law, has or will be taken to the extent reasonable to restrict the use of land near the airport. They felt comfortable in 2016 that we were meeting our, our, our grant assurances. And oh, by the way, those grant assurances come from us spending 5% of our money that went to annual town meeting to approve. So, we're contractually, we're contractually involved with the FAA. I'm sure there's going to be a number of people that are going to get up and make different comments, but my, my comment is, you have to go to the decision-maker if you're going to make a change. And not, and not realizing it. How many times have you heard, we've had three meetings on the airport, or airport governance. Two were formal. One in August of 2020 with Shereen, and, and September, I mean, December of 2020, and then September of 2021, when I was chair. And that was, you know, seven, eight months apart. And yet, everything that's said here about who's in charge and jurisdiction was brought up then. And, and this, this comment in 2016 recognizes the fact that we had a longer runway, and recognizes the fact that we were in, in compliance. However, why are we changing? It's pretty obvious to the FAA that we're looking to do rezoning in West Chatham. I mean, it's no big secret. It's out there. Right? They are concerned with what may happen. I don't, I wasn't part of the discussions that were, that Huntley had. But why, why is there a concern now? Because there is, they know, I would expect, we are affordable housing. The point that's being made is, we're not going to be able to put affordable housing in the runway protection zone. To be honest with you, I wouldn't put it there. I mean, I'm a very strong advocate for affordable housing, and we go into how much land is available and so forth. But let me give you what can happen. And this is something that was sent to us, and, and it's a 2009 decision that was done in, for, in Florida, Melbourne, Florida. And it's, it's, the approved town of Grant, it was Valkaria ordinance. Valkaria, I don't, I'm not sure where that is. But anyway, I'm not going to give you, 14 pages of a decision by the FAA. And this is what they said. I'll start off and just summarize. "In your letters, you request an opinion from the FAA concerning a town of Grant, Valkaria ordinance that would regulate aeronautical business and flight activities at the Valkaria Airport. The county of Brevard, town owns and operates the Valkaria Airport, but the airport is located within the town of Grant, Valkaria." All right. Bottom line. "Based upon the information available, including your letters and attachments, the ordinance is approved by the Town Council on June 1, impermissibly regulates aviation noise and safety issues. As a result, it is preempted under federal law, and the town lacks the power to enforce the ordinance. The basis of this conclusion is explained in the 14 pages that follow." That's my, my words. My point here is, whether we proceed with this or not, we have an RPC. And if you feel uncomfortable, and people don't understand what's going on, and maybe that's important, because there are certainly a whole bunch of people who are not recognizing the fact that they have to go, and I'm going to say it, I don't know how many times, to FAA, they want approval. And I'll just say it again. I've done it before. You know, and the only way you could do it, and I had a big group of people supporting me, was to go to FAA, and it can be done, but not like, not like this. We don't go ahead, what happens? If we, FAA, like Jeff mentioned, and our Town Council said, is probably nothing's going to happen because we're in compliance. When do we not become in compliance? We rezone West Chatham specifically in those eight acres, only, and we decide that we're going to put some, something greater than what's there now. And I would expect that we put the town in risk, one sort or another. There'll be a lot of discussions or whatever, but if we go out and decide that we're going to do something that's outside of where we are there, we're just saying we want to, we will be at risk. Now, I'm, I'm sure every, you know, there'll be a lot of people that say something different, but I, that's my personal opinion. Whether we move ahead or not, that Planning Board ought to understand how to, how to, how to work within an RPC. And I apologize for taking so long, but I've sat through three meetings with, with the Planning Board and the Airport Commission, and sometimes I want to throw my shoes at the TV set, listening to what, what's being asked. Dean, oh, Corey, and Dean, and then Jeff.
All right. I was going to ask this question then, because like I say, I made my observation that the questions, comments, concerns at the public hearing, you know, I, I'm reflecting back on the days when I was on the Planning Board. Efforts been put into different drafts, language, articles put forward, and when you get a lot of lack of clarity, or lack of concern on an article just before town meeting, that you need the educational component to get to the town meeting floor, and if with a favorable, favorable way. And if you don't do that, you're, you're setting yourself up for failure. So, if, if this were to move forward, and frankly, I don't think I can, I'm going to support moving it forward this year at least, and it were voted down, where does that leave us?
You'd have to redo it again. I don't know.
Zoning by law?
Yeah.
Actually, do you want Town Council to weigh in?
Yes, that's, yeah.
Okay. I spoke a lot. Town Council, his hands up?
Good evening. As previously noted, you know, the planning, the Planning Board is part of the process. The, the town meeting is part of the process for adopting bylaws. The FAA cannot compel the legislative body of the town to act in any certain way. It doesn't have the legal authority to do that. What the town has got to do, however, is take reasonable steps, reasonable measures, to, to implement appropriate land use regulations within the RPC. As Peter noted, we're at a critical juncture here now because the West Chatham area is about to be rezoned, and there are going to be additional, or new uses allowed, new structures may be built there as part of that zoning. I agree with Peter's assessment that the FAA may take a fresh look at the town's position in this regard, while in the midst of rezoning an area that includes an RPC, and failing to incorporate appropriate measures in there to make sure the land uses are compatible. That could change its posture with regard to, you know, enforcement action against the town. So, to answer your question, Corey, if we do, if we do not pass this bylaw this year, certainly the Airport Commission has, has acted very reasonably, and fulfilled its advocacy obligation to try to get a bylaw through. The Select Board is now in the position where the Planning Board was last night, exercising your executive decision-making powers to determine whether or not this is an appropriate bylaw to go forward to town meeting right now. I understand Corey's concerns about questions and ambiguities, but, you know, at some point in time, folks, the town is going to have to do something to address the, the land use situation within the RPZs. If not now, then at some point in the very near future. Otherwise, I do think the FAA will lose its patience and take a more assertive posture in trying to enforce its, its policies in Chatham.
Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, you, Terry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Couple of questions. Pat, to whomever can answer this. It's been stated that the RPZs are there now. Who established that? Who, who determined that? And what is the reason for the 200-foot gap between the beginning of the RPC and the end of the runway?
The, the RPZs, Dean, are prescribed by FAA regulation. They determine what the, the dimensional aspects of the RPC are, based on the characteristics of the airport, based on the aircraft that utilize the airport. So, it's, it's, my understanding is it's somewhat of a formulaic exercise, that they determine the RPC based upon the, the runway layout and the, and the aircraft that utilize it. It has been there, it has been there for a number of years, decades, I might guess, and the bottom line is, have we fulfilled our duty to advocate for and reasonably adopt land use regulations within those RPZs? That's kind of the situation we're in right now.
Can somebody address why there's a 200-foot gap on either side of the runway? I don't know if that's a question for, for Mr. Attorney McCarrios, or whoever.
He led to jump off. Excuse me.
Go ahead, Huntley.
Yeah. I would defer that to, I think he's still on, Matt Karen, he still there?
Yep, Huntley, I'm, I'm here.
Go ahead, Matt.
Could you answer that question for Mr. McCaskey?
Matt, go ahead, if you-
Mr. Chairman, is okay if I proceed? Okay, thank you. Yeah, no, it's just, like Attorney Costello was saying, it's prescribed by the FAA. There's what they call the FAA Design Advisory Circular, which prescribes all sorts of dimensions and imaginary surfaces and stuff like that on and around airports, and it's just one of those formulaic characteristics of the FAA design, I see.
So, so as Pat said, that these RPZs have been in place for a number of years?
That's, that's correct. Those RPZs exist in, for the town of Chatham and the airport as we speak today.
Thanks. I have a, a final question for, I think it's final, for Pat, on the municipal side. With respect to West Chatham rezoning, I know there've been changes in the, in legislation regarding quantums required to approve zoning changes for housing. So, if we have a reorganization, I'm sorry, or a rezoning of West Chatham that's proposed by the Planning Board and goes to town meeting, will that require a two-thirds vote, or will portions of it be, require only a simple majority if there are portions that allow for affordable housing? Do we know? I realize it's very speculative at the moment because you don't have a plan in front of you.
Right, right. I think given the, the overall scope, Dean, of the, the West Chatham Neighborhood zoning initiative, it would require, if submitted as a single bylaw amendment proposal, it would require the, the two-thirds supermajority vote. I don't think it's, it's definitive or specific, limited enough to creation of qualified affordable housing to, to warrant the majority vote.
That's an important point for people to understand, because if you want to defeat the RPC with one-third of town meeting voters, it's going to be equally easy to defeat the West Chatham rezoning with one-third. I will say just upfront, and I mean, we're going to hear from the public and from Huntley, I'm inclined to agree with select matters, that it's, in that I think it's appropriate for this board to refer this matter back to the Planning Board for reconsideration, because it is apparent that, we had two members of that board who abstained, and presumably, I didn't watch the meeting, but presumably they had some questions or concerns. One member was absent, so we didn't have a full board. And there may possibly be questions or concerns that those who voted no on it might have. So, it sounds to me like they need the opportunity, be given the opportunity to examine this matter further before it were to come back to us for, for placement on, on town meeting warrant. That's where I'm at at the present time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dean. Huntley? And then I have a couple of hands up that I'm going to go to.
All right. Thanks very much, Mr. Chairman. We did, the Airport Commission did bring this forward with our, as it said in this, in the presentation that Mr. Whalen did, to promote overall safety, protect people and property on the ground, minimize injury to aircraft occupants, preventing creation of hazards to flight, discouraging incompatible land uses and noise mitigation. I feel very strongly that, that the overlay zone is, is a critical component of what we are trying to do with the airport going forward, in terms of improving safety. We are looking at approaches that will improve safety. This, to me, is just part of that whole effort. I worry about the possibility of uncontrolled development in the West Chatham area, particularly in the RPC. And following up on that, should there be some kind of development that is, is not in, is not in sync with what the FAA recommends? It's one of those prohibitive uses? And that there is an accident in that area? I fear that the liability for the town would be significant. And especially when the town has been notified, as we have with this zoning bylaw. Certainly, if, even with the zoning bylaw in place, there could be an accident. I'm not, obviously, I can't rule that out. No one could second-guess that. But at least, if we did have the zoning bylaw in place, and that development in that region was restricted to the prohibited uses, perhaps if there were an accident, there would be less of an impact liability-wise. And I just want to, Attorney McCarrios had to leave for another meeting at 7:00, and he left me with this one thought. And he said, "The major concern that you may have, if this is not approved, is the FAA's willingness to provide discretionary grants going forward." And that, I think, is a major concern. I know there are probably a segment of the citizens in town that probably wouldn't care, but I do think there's a larger segment of the citizens in town that do care about that, and want to see this airport flourish. And that's why I strongly recommend that the, regardless of the information that was floated around last night, whether it's possible to do or not, and I can tell you that a lot of the suggestions are not possible to do. And there was a lot of information that clouded the issue, and I think really, truly gave those two abstentions, because, as they said, they needed more information. But the only information that I think that they were talking about was the fact that these other issues clouded the main issue. And it was unfortunate that it developed that way last night. Thank you.
Thank you, Huntley. I, let's see, I had a couple of hands up, and I want to get to the, to our room, but, hey, Rick, you lowered your hand. I figured you were going to take me on, but you're more than welcome to speak. Your hand was up, or did you drop it, huh? Yeah. Oh, thank you. No? Okay. Frank Messina has his hand up. Remind everyone, oh, wait a minute, Frank, if you can hold on, I see Rick back on. Go ahead, Rick. Remember, we all have three minutes, I've, or so, even though I went over it.
Thank you.
It'll be a minute.
Thank you, Peter. We went through this all last night for three and a half hours. The, the Planning Board's rejection last night of the airport's proposed, really regressive bylaws set a strong signal that, that this bylaw is deeply, deeply flawed. This was not the action of a group of airport critics. The Planning Board studied this matter carefully, including multiple meetings with airport officials, consultants, airport attorneys, and town council. And here we are doing it again tonight. The bottom line is simply this. The airport's proposed RPZs do not comply with FAA advisories, that they be clear of people, property, and roads. FAA states that the primary purpose of an RPC is protection of people and property on the ground. Town council noted that for decades, airport and town officials- Town council noted that for decades, airport and town officials had the obligation to comply with this FAA advisory. They didn't.
That's not true.
It's been neglected for decades, as town council has noted. And this proposal, zoning bylaw change, will do nothing to improve public safety. Those properties are there, and they're not going to go away. And it was just mentioned by the Chair of the Airport Commission that if we have an accident, there'll be a liability. The town will have the liability. It doesn't matter if we build new stuff there, it's already there. The FAA says that that liability could include closing the airport if you have that accident. Our priority is of public safety first and recreational flying second. I'd really like to see, I think the airport would be much better served if airport officials become more pragmatic about this. There will be a citizens petition, and it will call for shortening the runway back from 3,000 feet today to 2,200 feet where it was before. 2,200 feet is not a short runway, and it will more than accommodate the recreational flyers in our town. I guess that's all I have to say, although I could go on and on. I do find myself really upset with the fact that somebody, that the Chair is commenting that the FAA has already said that we comply. We do not comply. That FAA letter, I read it, it was read by the Planning Board. That FAA letter was based on false information, that this town and this airport was surrounded by residential development from its inception. That's 1935. It became a municipal airport in '49. We have pictures of the airport in 1960. It was surrounded by vacant land. That FAA letter conclusion is false. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. I have comments to that I'll make later. Mr. Fulton.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I do hope that all of you did watch the meeting last night before the Planning Board. A number of people spoke passionately, a number of people spoke eloquently. There was one gentleman who spoke last night both passionately and eloquently. And I have never met the gentleman, but he happens to serve on the Planning Board. And his name is Arthur Spruick. And after I heard him speak last night, I said, "You know, this town is very lucky to have an engineer on its planning board and very lucky to have Arthur Spruick on its planning board." Because as three of our selectmen have already intimated, Mr. Spruick himself said, "This has been rushed. This has not been properly vetted. There are all kinds of alternatives that need to be studied." As Attorney Costello said tonight, "There are different ways to achieve safety in your runway protection zone." And Mr. Spruick said, "There are many issues that we need to look at, and we need to vet, and we haven't done it. And this is not the way this Planning Board usually acts." And he referred to a couple of other projects that the Planning Board had taken up in the past, and he said, "You know, it took us a couple of years to do this and to study it effectively, and many months to study this proposal effectively." And I think the alternatives and this proposal need to be examined more carefully, as Mr. Spruick pointed out. And in terms of limiting the liability, I disagree with Attorney Harrison. Oh, excuse me, Mr. Harrison. If you adopt this tonight, it isn't going to limit your liability one iota because it's not going to move Meservee's Shell Station out of the RPZ. It's not going to move the Ocean State Job Lot out of the runway protection zone. And Lord knows, it's not going to move George Rider Road or State Route 28 out of the runway protection zone. So I must say, I agree with the majority of last night's Planning Board vote and with Mr. Spruick. And I hope that you will vote no on this, not to endorse this article because it needs more careful study.
Thank you, Mr. Fulton. Ms. Thompson. And then I'll go back out to the, out to the Teams meeting.
Thank you.
And it'll be, when Ms. Thompson's done, it'll be Frank Messina, and it looks like Juris.
Do I have to push a button or anything?
No, it should be, it should be green right on the bottom.
My husband also would like to speak. He's right here.
Okay, I'll get him after I go out to the others.
Good evening, Chairman Kokolas and Select Board members, and thank you for your inclusion of this important and necessary zoning amendment on your agenda tonight. I and many other residents of Chatham are deeply concerned about the safety of both people and personal property within the present RPZ zone at the Chatham Airport. The Airport Commission should be applauded for their efforts to rectify an unfortunate historical disregard for FAA regulations defined in the FAA Airport Division Runway Protection Zone. Regardless of the existing construction that was permitted in the past within the RPZ, the federal regulations clearly state under compatible land use as follows: "Com compatible land use within the RPZ is generally restricted to such land uses as agricultural, golf course, and similar uses that do not involve congregations of people, or construction of buildings, or other improvements that may be obstructions." The Airport Division Regulation goes on to say, "Land uses prohibited from the RPZ are residences, places of public assembly, churches, schools, hospitals, office buildings, shopping centers, and other uses with similar concentrations of persons typify places of public assembly. It remains crystal clear that something must be done to comply as much as possible with FAA regulations. We cannot tear down existing buildings. The Airport Commission's Amendment Overlay Bylaw brings our airport into closer compliance by preventing any future construction that would disregard all of the above-mentioned restrictions or land uses. The FAA, under recommendations, gives clear guidelines to airport managers, commissioners, and sponsors of airports as follows," and this is in quotes, "as well as what I had read before. In particular, easements should be reviewed to ensure that land uses are restricted, not just obstructions. Where necessary, requests should be made to the appropriate zoning authority to rezone such land to prevent future incompatible use." Our town council, who has been both at the Planning Board meetings and here, has unequivocally stated that the RPZ surrounding the Chatham Airport is not in compliance with FAA regulations, and I believe, as a result, leaves the town as sponsor, as well as the Airport Commission, open to legal liability for future potential aircraft accidents. Above all other requirements that should be met, to align our RPZ with 21st-century statutes. It's been six years since the 206 letter from the FAA. We don't know what they're, how they will feel about it now. This board and this--
And you're getting your past three minutes, if you could wrap it up.
Oh, excuse me.
Oh, you can finish. Just you go to your bottom line.
Above all other requirements that should be met, to align our RPZ with 21st-century statutes, the Board, the Planning Board and the Select Board need to consider the safety of its citizens on the ground and in the air. Please consider voting to support this extremely critical bylaw amendment.
Thank you, Ann.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I have a process question for Pat before he leaves at 7:30, and I was hoping that I'd be able to ask it before that.
Pat, you're still on, huh?
I am.
Yeah.
Hi, Pat. Thanks.
Hello, Chris.
Question. So if we, I'm not sure it's going to happen, but if we vote this to be put on the warrant and it goes to town meeting, it will require a two-thirds vote to pass, correct?
That's correct.
If it does not pass, do we have to wait a certain period of time before it's reintroduced to the bylaw and go back to the Planning Board? Can it go immediately back to the Planning Board? Or do we have to wait?
There is generally a waiting period of two years after a zoning bylaw is acted upon unfavorably at town meeting. A negative vote at town meeting, a vote of disapproval, I should say, at town meeting would trigger that provision. However, the Planning Board could vote to override that, or if a substantively different format bylaw is presented, that wouldn't be subject to that two-year period. The two-year period would generally only relate to a bylaw that is substantially or materially similar to that which was defeated.
Okay, so saying that this didn't pass, and we refer back to the Planning Board as-is, they couldn't take it up as-is, it would have to be totally scrapped?
I believe the Planning Board can vote by a supermajority vote to bypass that two-year period.
Okay.
If they, in their discretion, feel it's appropriate to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Any other questions for Pat? Thanks, Pat. Thank you for taking the time. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Let's see. We have, I promised I'd go to Frank Messina, then Juris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm listening to this meeting only because I was waiting for my Historic Preservation Incentive bylaw to come up. And obviously, you know, you folks put this on first, which is obviously good because it's an important issue. I really never followed this whole airport business too closely. I attended only one meeting, the first, one of the first meetings that the Airport Commission had at the community center, which was really a terrible meeting. And, you know, you could, you could, the amount of distrust of the Airport Commission and the comments were very sad. And I think it's been publicly said that, you know, we've got a long way to go to get back the public's confidence in this whole process and the Commission itself. And I know Huntley has tried very hard and to do that, but I think what Corey indicated, this is not ready for primetime, I think somehow the Airport Commission and the Planning Board need to step back and look at some of the options. I guess everybody feels they've done their best, but this is not going to pass town meeting. No way. There's just too much information and too much, it's too complicated. I actually appreciate listening to Mr. Costello, his explanation of where we are and the options. And apparently, we do have options other than just a major overlay. But the one specific question, if I have it, I haven't used my three minutes here, is that, do we know what it will cost the town by passing this overlay district in the loss of values to individual properties? In other words, could they ask for tax reduction and stuff like that? It seems to me some kind of a cost analysis should be done. Hopefully, you're going to wait another year, you know, before we bring this back, maybe two. But I don't think we have answered all the questions. Maybe you have, but I haven't seen that. Anyway, nothing too constructive, other than my recommendation would be not ready for primetime.
Yeah, thanks, Frank, and that's a good question. Let's see, Juris, and then Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we have overlooked one thing. The RPZ is not a static trapezoid casting concrete. The town council made a very good statement that the RPZs are based upon the aircraft that fly into the airport, according to the FAA. And our airport RPZs are based upon a Group 1 aircraft. And it says, and those aircraft have specific characteristics. But currently, we have Group 2 planes flying into our airport. Group 2 are the Pilates and the corporate jets. FAA has said that if there are 500 operations of a certain characteristic plane, that that has to become the new design aircraft for the airport. We have over 500 operations of Pilates and corporate jets falling in Group 2 category aircraft. So now, if the size of the RPZs is determined based upon now a Group 2 aircraft, the RPZs are greatly enlarged. For a Group 1 RPZ trapezoid currently, which we have, which we have had for 50 years because we've had single-engine planes, it was satisfactory. The area for Group 1 RPZs are approximately nine acres. Now, if we can change the new design aircraft to a Group 2, those RPZs grow to about 47 acres. It's going to cover far more houses, far more businesses. It's going to cross way over Route 28. It's going to be, what, four times, almost five times the area. Can you imagine a overlay zone for that area? So I think you really have to consider Group 2 planes flying in and the trapezoid or the RPZ size for a Group 2 planes.
You're up three minutes.
It's greatly more than the current ones. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Juris. We have someone coming up to speak. Welcome.
Is it the right speaker?
Yes, you're fine.
I seem to hear, as I've paid attention to this over the last two years, two arguments. One is economic, and one is safety. My concern, now, I have had Naval Air Corps flight training, but I also have been through a situation where my son was flying in a plane with a pilot, his girlfriend, the pilot's daughter, and one other person in the backseat, going from Nantucket to Newport. The crankshaft froze. The pilot and the young lady were killed. They couldn't get, they were in the RPZ, they couldn't do anything about it. Now, if there's any change to an RPZ, which the FAA has determined from historical fact, and most aircraft accidents are in takeoff and landing zones, we should pay attention to the FAA. They have the experience. Economics aside, if we don't act soon, we own it. It's our fault because a certain presentation has been made very clearly that safety is a primary reason for the RPZ. I fully expect-- I fully expect that the selectmen take ownership for this issue and not kick it down the road. It's simple. Economics and development or safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me see, anyone else in the, oh, we have some hands up. Let's see, which one first?
So Elaine Gibbs and then Annette Bartlett.
Okay, Elaine Gibbs, then Annette.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome, Elaine.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I agree with Huntley's comments earlier. I think this became unnecessarily complicated last night. It went, sort of went off the rails into different areas, and there was a potential of that tonight. The bylaw is very well-written, it's FAA language, there's nothing complicated about it. It is a contractual obligation we have. We've received over $11 million for rehab to the airport. When we do that, we assure that we are going to comply with the FAA's regulations in terms of non-develop within an RPZ. Just so you understand the scope of this, the southern runway protection zone is about eight acres of the 24 that the planning board wants to develop under their new underlay program. They have also said they want up to 32 bedrooms per acre. That would translate to anywhere between 500 and 700 people that would be living within the RPZ down the road in the future if that zoning bylaw were to pass. The FAA found out about this, apparently, in 2019. I did not learn this till last night. The chairman of the planning board said that the FAA found out that they were doing a bylaw review and redevelopment in that area and notified them that they could not build within the RPZ. The planning board knew it, staff knew it, the town knew it, and nothing occurred. They proceeded as if it didn't exist, and the Cape Cod Commission ignored it until April of 2021, when the Airport Commission brought it to their attention. I think, and it's unfortunate, Mr. McCarius and Pat Costello are not here because they said it earlier and they said it last night, that by not doing this bylaw doesn't mean you can develop there. The FAA restrictions still apply in terms of building residences, commercial uses, changing use. Everything else is grandfathered. So all this is doing is codifying it and for future boards, so it's not ignored again like it was for the last 20 years, because planning board members come and go. And that way, potential buyers, people who want to make changes to their property, know what to do because it is a bylaw. So I would hope, I'm concerned, and Shereen, thank you for that question, because I don't think you can change the bylaw because it is driven by the FAA. And if it were to fail, and we had to wait two years, the risk of the planning board going forward and wanting to develop that with an additional 500 to 700 people, I think the FAA would take exception to that. So I guess the best bet is to move forward, but quickly, as quickly as possible, so that they're comfortable with it. The contention last night was not about the bylaw itself, it was about the fact that they want to develop an increased density within that area, which they cannot do whether or not we pass this bylaw.
You're, three minutes, Elaine.
I'm done, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's see, I had Ned next. Welcome, Ned.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me all right?
Sure can.
Thank you, sir. I apologize, the camera, when I turn it on, may slow me down and be disruptive, especially with the three-minute limitation, if I may proceed without it.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am one of the folks who spoke last night. My property is at 35 Agnes Lane, and as with the hearing last night, or meeting last night, it wasn't brought up, the 24 end and the 24 runway that impacts Agnes Lane in Old Queen Anne. And I know it is not the intent of these bodies to treat it as an afterthought, yet that's the result. I understand there's a really important debate going on in town about West Chatham redevelopment, rotaries that have been installed. But I think a couple clarifying points, and I would ask, I know one or more of the board members here mentioned they watched last night. I would ask you to bring that material into this record. I know it's been in part brought in by those members who attended, but we waited over three hours for the opportunity to speak. And there's a few points that I think merit this repeating. Zoning is wholly within the town and its obligation. It is one of the toolbox that is cited in the advisory circular by FAA. You do not have a contractual obligation under any grant authority to any one of those solutions or to adopt any of those solutions. It is an advisory, not a regulation. You do have a contractual obligation to take those reasonable actions, right? And to be clear, this has been quoted a couple times, but it is appropriate action to the extent reasonable. The same guidance that has been cited for over three years now is also quoted only in part, and another part is really important here. The FAA issues plenty of guidance and rulings where the development has already occurred. Agnes Lane, my folks bought it from one of members of the Dubus family, there are three generations of my family in that house now. It has been there nearly as long as the incorporation of that municipal airport, about 10 years afterwards. And they have been compatible for many years, and I have been actually quite a friend to the airport in my lifetime with the property in Chatham. This has become more acrimonious than it should, but the misinformation should stop. The zoning is within the town, those of us who are on the other side are really just an issue of height limitation. You do not need to restrict, nor is it appropriate to restrict use. It's a single-family zone. When people say this bylaw is written thoughtfully, it was cut and paste largely from FAA guidance. Perfectly reasonable, except for when you ignore their guidance on when the property's already developed. Case in point, I spoke to this last night on zoning, and I appreciate the great efforts of Pat Costello and others. Lot of good thought, but more to be done, as members here have pointed out. Section 3 allows the continuing uses. Section 4 comes ahead and prohibits uses. The first thing prohibited is residential use. That's my entire street and neighborhood. Yes, you put it into a grandfathering clause. Do you know what happens to a grandfathering clause under an insurance policy in Massachusetts? It can't be rebuilt.
Hey, Ned, you're over three minutes, Ned.
I appreciate your consideration, sir. May I conclude?
Yeah, bottom line, thanks.
Bottom line, I do think there's an important effort here. The last point is, the RPZ, much like, much like you could do with the, pardon me. Two last thoughts, Commissioner, I apologize.
Go ahead.
Much like you could negotiate and did negotiate the approach surface to the airport with the FAA, you can also address the RPZ, and we should. And I think more time to do this correctly and to get the uses restricted correctly is appropriate. You can also pass and modify your zoning bylaw to treat one end of the runway, that which is developed and restricted to single-family houses, differently than the debate you've all focused on, on the West Chatham. And I would ask, as a regeneration family in town, that you think about that. There is an important difference in the land uses. We exist, we are residential, we are limited. Your bylaw, while it may grandfather, would outlaw residential use and does on its face.
Thank you, Ned.
Thank you for your additional time to the board. I appreciate your patience with me going over, and thank you for your fine consideration of the issue. Genuinely, it's an important debate.
Thank you, Ned, I'm trying to find out which is next.
So, Mr. Chair, we have Huntley Harrison, the airport chair, and then we have a couple of speakers who haven't spoke before.
Let's go there.
Dave and a TJW, but also Rick Levitt wants to speak again.
Okay, Dave and TJW, and then we'll either go to Huntley, if it's hands still, wants to be up, and then back to Mr. Levitt, unless I get somebody else. Okay.
Okay, I think I heard my name, David Bixby.
Okay, Mr. Bixby, you got three minutes.
Three minutes to comment on two hours of stuff, but I guess I'll limit it to, my understanding of this whole issue with the runway protection zone has been, was driven by the proposal by the commission to bring new airport approach procedures into Chatham. I think that's what has driven this discussion on runway protection zones. Missing in all of this, in my opinion, or to my knowledge, is, has the FAA actually taken a position yet on these new runway approaches? And if they haven't, why are we having all these discussions without the FAA taking a stand or taking a position on, I think, I think the commission has requested of the FAA approval of new runway protection, runway, I'm sorry, runway approaches. Has the FAA made a determination yet? If they haven't, it seems like we're putting the cart before the horse here, right? Is there, is there an answer to that question?
No, they haven't, but I think your assumption is wrong.
What, what is my assumption incorrect?
But go ahead, continue on, you can make your point, and let's continue on.
I just, I just did make my point.
Okay, thank you.
Where is, where is, where is my assumption incorrect?
You said it's based...
My assumption is that the FAA has not made a decision yet on the runway approaches, which has driven this whole discussion about runway protection zones. If they haven't made that decision, where is my assumption incorrect? What did I say that's wrong?
That, that...
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman.
Huntley, go ahead.
Excuse me. Mr. Bixby is totally incorrect. The issues are not related. The approaches that we're looking at did not drive anything with regard to the overlay district that we're talking about tonight. Totally unrelated.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, thanks, David, we're going to move on.
I've never heard that before, but I'll, I'll accept that for now. Thank you.
Okay, David, thank you. Who's TJW?
TJW.
TJW, I should know who that is. Is that Tom Wilson?
That is. Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening, Tom.
Thank you, and thank you to the board for your patience in dealing with this ongoing saga. You know, I sit here and listen, and I try and keep things simple, and let me give you a few simple thoughts. The FAA says that an RPZ is an area that's free of above-ground structures. So my picture of an RPZ is a big grassy field at the end of the runway that extends out that 1,000 feet. That's what an RPZ should be, okay? And an FAA says it expects airport sponsors, which in our case is the town of Chatham, to take all possible measures to remove or mitigate any existing incompatible land uses. Well, when you look at our RPZs, and let's start with the Agnes Lane area, we have a whole residential community at the end of one runway that is an incompatible land use. It's a neighborhood, it's structures, it's homes, it's people living there. And when you look at the other end, you've got Ocean State Job Lot, you've got a gas station, which is definitely not allowed in an RPZ. They don't want fuel storage facilities in an RPZ. You've got the huge parking lot for Ocean State Job Lot, where people congregate regularly. In the summer, in July, that parking lot is jammed on Tuesday afternoons when we have our farmer's market. You've got extra-wide pedestrian paths, you've got multiple bike lanes, all in our RPZ. So even though many of these conditions are pre-existing, that doesn't translate into them being safe. They're not safe. Otherwise, the FAA wouldn't have a definition of an RPZ as a big grassy field, as an area that doesn't have structures and where people don't congregate. Our RPZs are not safe. And last night at the planning board, I used this description. Imagine it's June or July on a Tuesday afternoon in the Ocean State Parking Lot. The farmer's market's in full swing, the bike path is full, pedestrians are walking all over. Before you vote on this tonight, think about all of those people standing in that area. How many of them are aware that they're standing in an area that the FAA doesn't allow them to be? That they're standing in a runway protection zone? To me, referring this back to the planning board is an excellent first step. But to me, the right step is to move the RPZ back onto airport property. Take all the homes in Agnes Lane out of the RPZ. Take all the properties in West Chatham that are in the RPZ out of it, move it back on to airport property. You still have 2,200 feet of length for most of the aircraft that come to our airport to land it. That's the answer. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak and for your patience.
Oh, thank you, Tom. We have some...
So you have Huntley Harrison and Rick Levitt.
Okay, Huntley, you still want to speak? You're muted? Oh, that's good.
Thank you, thank you. I just wanted to comment on a previous speaker with regard to the RPZs getting larger. The RPZs are not going to get larger, they're going to stay exactly the same. The only thing that changes an RPZ, the dimension of the RPZ, is a function of the design aircraft, which was mentioned, the type of operation of that aircraft, and visibility minimums. All three components are taken into consideration before any change in the RPZ from what it is currently. So, it's not, and also, it was mentioned that 500 operations or more require that the design aircraft be changed to a Type II. That would not happen overnight. The FAA would examine it and would probably look at a trend over several, several years before they made any determination of changing the design aircraft to a Type II aircraft. So I hope that clarifies things and helps in this discussion. We continually get information that tends not to be correct, and I hope that corrects things and we can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Huntley. Okay, Rick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the subject of incorrect information, I'll be very brief. A previous speaker said that something like, what, 500 to 700 new families or people are going to be moving into West Chatham? The planning board has no, nothing on its agenda or in its draft bylaws that they're preparing that would come even close to that. And I think we all, I think you all know that. And just finally, a longtime West Chatham property owner told the planning board last night, he wanted his property developed as affordable and attainable housing for Chatham's working families. His nearly two acres on already-developed land in a compact mixed-use village center are ideal and will preserve valuable open space, which you'll be talking about shortly. If this article, if this airport's article is approved, that can't happen. We can't, we won't have affordable and attainable housing on those two acres. So my bottom line is simply this, a vote against this article is a vote for affordable housing in Chatham. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Let's see, do we have any others? I see, looks like Elaine.
Elaine and a Nicole Stern and a Renee Haas.
Okay, Elaine and then Nicole Stern and I guess...
Renee Haas.
Oh, Renee Haas. Okay. Elaine, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is just briefly regarding the last comment made about my comments. Those numbers came from the planning board. The planning board is considering up to 32 bedrooms per acre. That's 256 bedrooms with two people in each bedroom. That's 500 people. If there are three bedrooms, it could go to 500 to 700. That is their plan. And that's not tomorrow, but that's what the zoning would allow for within the RPZ. I got that from the Cape Cod Commission, they said it's eight acres, and the planning board themselves said up to 32 bedrooms per acre. So if he's got a problem, he can go and talk to the planning board. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Next is Nicole, welcome, Nicole. Welcome, Nicole Stern.
Nicole, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. It seems to me that there should be a win-win here, that we can protect the runway protection zone, and since it really does wind up in the town's hands, why can't we just drop the second part about development in the residential area and just grandfather it all with maybe some restrictions as far as height is concerned? Again, I know that's a whole big to-do, but to me, it makes a lot of sense. And my other question is, and I hope someone can answer it, or maybe not, if we don't have a runway protection zone and there is development for affordable housing or regular housing, whatever the town has in mind, will those homeowners be required to sign a waiver acknowledging that they're in a runway protection zone with the explanation from the FAA about their restrictions being in the runway protection zone? It's an interesting question. I would assume that they would have to have a waiver. Otherwise, there could be a lot of lawsuits. And I think we keep forgetting about the crash in Provincetown. And again, this is not, you know, the same little airport that we've always had. This is going to be flights at night, flights in inclement weather, you know, in fogs, you know. A lot, I know there's a lot of very experienced pilots, but there's also a lot of pilots that are used to this run that haven't landed in Chatham at night through clouds when they couldn't see the runway. So if this is something that we're going to do, I think we have to really think about the questions we have to ask people if we're going to develop in the runway protection zone. And again, I still think we could have an overlay and give, is it 24 properties, you know, between the two ends, give them a break. And that kind of solves the problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nicole. Next is Renee. Welcome back, Renee.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Kokolos. Just very, very briefly, you know, I really appreciate the tremendously complex and difficult job that the select board and ultimately the town has in terms of basically some, you know, competing interests that all, that do relate to safety in one form or another. And, you know, on the one hand, you know, there have been speakers who have mentioned the dangers of the RPZ, you know, and the fact that it is, and the FAA has created this because there is a higher risk of something happening in that place other than, but it's not well-defined as the FAA does. It's just as you get closer or further away from the airport, you know, the risk changes. So there is, you know, concern, which some people have, you know, raised and said the solution is to move the thresholds onto airport property. The problem that that raises is that were want to do that, there is a wide variety of issues that, you know, that are created by that, by that solution. You know, most, most, you know, importantly, it's the, you know, significant reduction in the safety of the airport by having a shorter runway. So, you know, there's the competing issues, there's no perfect solution. The problem with, you know, what has been proposed as far as moving the thresholds is on top of the fact that it actually creates a less safe overall environment. Keep in mind, you know, that we've had the RPZ in place for 50 years or more, and thank God, you know, and, you know, knock on wood, but there's never been an accident that has caused harm to anyone on the ground in the RPZ. So I'm not saying that there's no danger there, but it has to be put into perspective with other potential dangers that could be, you know, instituted by, you know, invoking some of these other so-called solutions. It's a balancing act, a very tough balancing act, and I really appreciate the, you know, the difficulty of the, you know, the problem before the select board and ultimately the town. Thank you, Chairman Kokolos.
Thank you, Renee. I'll bring it back to the board, I don't see anybody else. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Town Council has intimated, I don't think this is an issue that we can let linger unresolved. And it may very well be that the RPZ is an advisable step for the town to take, but I suspect that if we were to send this article to town meeting this May, it would be defeated. It only takes one-third of the voters to defeat it. And as Pat responded to board member, I'm sorry, Davis's-
Corey?
Question, no, it was Shereen's question, I'm sorry. Momentary lapse here.
That's my trick.
Yeah, well, someone's gonna have to replace you, but I did point out to you that Tom Brady unretired, so you ought to think about that. I think if it were to go to town meeting, it would be defeated. So I want to offer a motion that the select board send a letter to the planning board requesting prompt further consideration of this matter in light of the legal and contractual considerations that have been outlined by Town Council.
That's my motion. Dean, if we have a second?
I'll second for discussion purposes.
Okay. I had Jeff first, I'm sorry, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, you know, in my heart of hearts and in my gut, I just am getting the feeling that this, this proposed bylaw is just preemptive, it's too preemptive. It's not fully baked yet, it needs more work. And I think the planning board's vote 1-3-2, that is such an incredible non-endorsement of this article, it's just very telling. I will take the time to look at the planning board discussion. The discussion just this evening is evidence of the amount of confusion, misunderstanding, I respectfully call it noise around the issue. And for me to get behind it, we need to, we need to have a very carefully crafted article that we think is gonna pass. Totally agree with Selectman Castro, and Corey earlier commented that we bring this to town meeting, this is going down, I think it's going down. And then we'd have to wait a while unless the planning board got super creative and got their teeth really into it, came up with a much different article that was palatable to the town. I want folks to know that we really have had an RPZ, if you will, the FAA thinks we've had an RPZ for years, and we've allowed development there, and they haven't, they haven't, you know, taken us to task on having an RPZ. I also want folks to understand that their property, should this ever come to pass, would be grandfathered. It's just if you had any changes or if you wanted to develop undeveloped property, you would have to go get a special permit, I would have to pass muster. So, but I'm clear, my experience, you haven't got a planning board behind zoning changes, you are dead in the water at town meeting. We've seen it over and over and over. Look how many times you guys, you guys had hearing after hearing after hearing and really, really, fully baked a change to a zoning bylaw before it, before it went to town meeting and got approved. Oftentimes, they didn't get approved, and this one, frankly, I don't, I don't think we're gonna put, there's just too much noise around it. So I would support Selectman Castro's motion and look forward to more discussion. I think the discussion's been robust and interesting and lengthy. Thank you.
Okay, Corey, and Shereen.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I fully agree that if we send this forward at this town meeting, it will go down in flames. You know, I, again, I've served on the planning board, I can read the room pretty well. A 1-3-2 endorsement by the planning board does not hold well. It doesn't. It'll raise more questions, well, why did they vote that way? But the members of the planning board themselves said, we can take more time, you know, some identify themselves as, you know, with better background, like, we're willing to work on this, we're willing to process it through, you know, and go through a better process and get it ready for the appropriate time. I guess my only question to the motion on the table is, is there an expectation for a May 2023 presentation, you know, having prepared and having it ready for the May 2023 annual town meeting? But I don't see them working on it at the level and the completeness for this year. So I just want a clarification on that, please.
Mr. Chairman, so I certainly wouldn't expect that they would have something for this May.
Right.
I didn't put a date. I would hope that they could come up, because again, I don't really think we, it's good for the town to have this issue just lingering out there. And I frankly think that the unresolution of it would impact the rezoning potential for West Chatham that various people are interested in. So I didn't put May 20, the annual meeting 2023, because I don't know, I would hope that they could do it by then, I was going to leave it up to them. But if you want to offer an amendment, that's-
No, 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 I guess what I'm, what I'm just making sure is that we're doing it in as timely a manner as possible with, I guess, the unofficial position of, you know, May 2023 hopefully deadline, or maybe more optimistically, this town loves special town meetings, who knows what's gonna happen in the fall? If they're queued up and ready for it, it's ready for the fall, so.
I simply put the word prompt in there.
I'm fine, I'm fine with it, I'm fine with it.
I have no expectation that they could get this done in time for May.
For May, agreed.
Yeah, Shereen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I've gone back and forth all night with this, and I looked at it, and I thought it was, I thought the bylaw itself, it was reasonable measures, and, you know, basically what Jeff had said, that this, there's, you know, this is about the idea that there's people grandfathered in, this is about goals for potential future conflicts. So when I saw the presentation that Terry had made, I thought it was a good presentation. But then to step back and to listen to the noise that's going back and forth that's exhausting, this process with the airport has been absolutely exhausting. And I know some of the political strategies out there is to delay, and it happens in this town all the time, delay, 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 make enough noise to delay it, delay it, delay it, and we, you know, we fall victim to that a lot. However, I don't think, as presented, there's a lot of people out there that are making that noise, but there's a lot of people that aren't paying attention to this, too. And I think that we will be victimized by that lack of attention, especially when they do take for-batum the planning board's recommendation, the vote, and they look at that and they see what it is. It really troubles me to have to say that I'm not going to vote in favor of moving this forward, and I think that I will agree with Selectman Castro's motion to refer this back to the planning board.
Thank you, Shereen. Yeah, I'm sort of on the same page as Shereen. Here's the understanding, the problem gets back to, I'm a pretty straightforward guy, and I like to keep things relatively simple. I'm not a lawyer, I'm an engineer and I'm a businessman. I want to get things done. And I understand aviation, I understand the FAA, I've been out of it a number of years, so things could change. But when this goes back to the planning board, and I'm probably gonna vote to move it back as much as I don't want to, it has to be crystal-clear jurisdiction. And I hate to keep on saying this, but what we've heard tonight ignores, in a number of cases, the fact that we have to go to FAA. We're going to change the runway protection zone. FAA made that runway protection zone. FAA based their decision on faulty information. They came here, you look, read the letter, they came here, they reviewed the process. I saw the pictures that were put up in 1950s and 60s where there was nothing there, but didn't talk about what zoning and who owned it. Because the minute they put a runway protection zone on there, that was, it was a pre-existing non-conforming. So that meant that you could build what you wanted on there. Then we got to 20, whenever the airport was, what, the runway length was extended in 2011 or something like that? 2016, we got a report that says, okay, we're fine. So I'm fine with the fact that we are not, we are in conformance with FAA requirements because we've done a number of things. We have Chapter 100 that takes care of our above-area area. We have a number of parcels that were purchased with the airport that allowed for, you know, to become airport property. But yes, I agree, it's built up. Here's the problem, and the issue that I struggle with, and I think everyone struggles with, you want to have development. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna move the runway protection zone so it doesn't call for development, and we're gonna shorten the runway so airplanes can come in a little bit higher and then come in at a lower, at a farther place. And that's supposed to be safer? Airplanes are still flying over the same area, airplanes will have problems, you know, it just, I have a tip, I want, well, when you fly as much as a number of people do, you know that it's, it has, there's a problem. So send it back to the planning board, but understand, you can make any arguments you want, but you still have to go to FAA. And we have to make our arguments. I'm not saying we couldn't, but we have to. And how long is that gonna take? So if it takes two years or three years, took me four, you're, actually, three, three years to get something changed, what happens in West Chatham? Do they develop West Chatham RPZ so it becomes something with affordable housing there for that two acres? As much as I would appreciate whatever that place is, I'd like to know who that is, too, by the way, we'll go after him. But my problem is, we send it back to the planning board, there had to be clear understanding, and I hope we get some of this in the minutes, clear understanding what their jurisdiction is, and we're gonna get a lot of discussion on whether or not the town can do that or not. Dean, go ahead, I know you want to say something.
I was just going to suggest in light of what you just said, that if the board votes this motion, that accompanying the letter, which I assume would be signed by the chair, that we would send the approved minutes of this, of tonight's meeting that relate to this topic.
Yeah, that's good, that's fine. I, you know, and I understand where the planning board is coming, I'm with you, Corey, you know, you're on a planning board a long time, and you come up with this stuff, and if they don't understand it, how is anybody else gonna understand it? But how do you get through the noise, and how do you do, and how do you do what we think is best for the town in some sort of a compromise, if there is one? Okay. I don't have any-
You ready for your vote?
Yeah, I guess so. Okay. Let's start with Shereen.
Vote on Dean's-
Yeah, on Dean's.
Aye.
Okay. Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thank you all, everyone, good discussion, difficult discussion.
Just getting warmed up, right?
Let's move on. Okay, next on our agenda, a number of other zoning amendments. First is the accessory dwelling units. And let me get to-
Ally.
Ally?
Yeah.
Oh, there you are, I see you. Thanks, Ally.
No problem. If it's okay with you, Mr. Chair, I know that we've obviously had, you know, a long night in discussion, I could go through all four of them at the same time if you'd like.
Yeah, you talked me into it, go ahead.
Okay. So at the February 8th, 2022 Select Board meeting, we did review these four proposed zoning bylaw amendments. The accessory dwelling unit bylaw, which is revisions to the existing accessory dwelling unit bylaw, that makes it easier to potentially apply. There's two proposed zoning amendment changes in this. The first one would be to allow seasonal homeowners to be able to apply for an ADU, whereas right now, it's currently not allowed. And then the second one would be to allow internal ADU, so inside an existing structure, to be, to be able to apply as a byright application instead of through a special permit. So we feel that it will be, allow more property owners to take advantage of this bylaw through these amendments. The second one is the floodplain district bylaw, this is a mandatory bylaw that came down from FEMA. This is a mandatory bylaw that came down from FEMA. The third one is an accessory building and structure change. It's to the definition of sizes and exemption from coverage calculations for small sheds. And then the last one is the historic preservation incentive bylaw, which is a new bylaw proposed, and it varies dimensional requirements on specific lots in return for historic preservation restriction on a home. And I could, of course, go through those in more detail if you'd like and answer any questions. But as I said before, we did go through them in more detail at the Select Board's February 8th meeting, when the board voted to refer these to the planning board for the required public hearing. The planning board did hold that required public hearing on March 7th, 2022, and the planning board voted unanimously to recommend all four zoning amendments to annual town meeting. So I'm here tonight to take the next step, to ask the Select Board to place these four warrant articles, zoning warrant articles, on the annual town meeting for 2022. And again, I would ask, you know, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to go into more detail, those specific bylaws. And we also hope that you would vote a favorable recommendation as well for the four proposals.
Okay, thank you. Ally, any comments from the board or questions? Dean and Jeff?
Mr. Chairman, go ahead. Mr. Chairman, the board heard a discussion of the essence of these four bylaws. I think if there have been any changes, they've been fairly modest. So I was going to move that we place all four of them on the warrant for the annual town meeting in May.
Okay, can I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion? No? We move to put on the warrant? Let's take a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Okay, you have a motion to.
Recommend.
Recommend?
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay, any discussion? Seeing none. Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Chair says aye to the first one, too. I saw you. I moved too quickly, thank you. Thank you, Ally.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next is 127 Old Harbor Road, and that is Katie.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, everybody. Can you, can you hear me okay?
Sure, that's great.
All right, great. Thank you very much. So again, this is a warrant article for the reuse of the structures at 127 Old Harbor Road to be used for affordable or attainable housing. The board had voted at their, at an earlier meeting to place this article on the warrant, and tonight's action would be to look to support it. We did want to make sure that, you'll see in the staff report and in the draft warrant article, that we do, we are specifically excluding the playground area. We are looking to reuse the existing structures on site for affordable and attainable housing, but we are not looking to do anything with the existing playground, and as a matter of fact, would look to make sure that that is protected into the future. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Corey?
Well, I have some comments to make, you know, to the actual discussion later, but I do want to bring that, your comment you just made, because I have a little issue, we're playing cutesy with the language, because the action of the board, which I was in the minority of, on January 11th, 2022, the 3-2 vote to declare the land at 127 Old Harbor Road surplus, you know, which we did take. So procedurally, and clearly, I support the playground, don't get me wrong on that. And I can expand on that later with my, with my position on this. I gotta go ask the legal question, I mean, maybe we should have asked this for Pat. We are now, how did it come about that we're just doing the structures now? I think procedurally, we have to go forward with the fact that the vote was what it was. I mean, I was in a minority, it was a surplus of everything on that land. Because following that vote, people came forth to me and questioned why I voted yea or nay, and, you know, they have their own opinions, you know, we should do this, we should not do this, we're only going to get one unit, well, if we take out of the playground, we can get more units, we can get more density. There's different opinions out there. So just from a mechanic's perspective, not whether I'm right or wrong, but from a mechanical procedural perspective, can we say right now, just the structures? That's, I mean.
I guess, let me go to Katie first, and then comments.
Mr. Chairman, I think, I'd just like to clarify that it's been the intent, right from the beginning, back from the original staff report that we had done in 2019, to discuss, to discuss this property, that it was always the intent to reutilize the existing buildings on site. And so I just, I would like to make that clear, and so I'm sorry if that wasn't clear at the January 11th meeting, but.
It's not, it's not clear, because, you know, I got, I had to either, you know, support or defend my position on it. And I think the, the vote taken, and, you know, the, like I say, the 3-2 vote to declare the entire land, you know, we, the wishes of the family, basically, you know, they were, they expired, all bets are off, we're going to use this land in whatever manner we feel is appropriate for the town's benefit, we're going to look at the property, the structure, everything, at least from communications with some people, you know, all bets are off, it included everything. And I think that is at least the position of some people, whether they support it or don't support it, that the vote taken on the 11th included everything. And I believe, and I'll let him speak for, Mr. Castro actually asked a question to our town council if that was the case. I may be wrong on that, but I believe that was actually asked at that meeting. So that's why I bring it up from a procedural perspective, what kind of a pickle this puts us in. Because, I mean, I'm going to have a discussion about why I voted in the minority, trust me on that one. But I think we're getting a little cutesy with the, with the language, and that, you know, whether, the fact, the fact, you know, taking out the playground is a very supportive position for me. I just want to make clean with our, with our process, and that's, it just, it's rubbing me a little bit the wrong way.
Yeah, Dean, go ahead.
Did you want to say?
No, all I was going to say is if Pat was here, I'd go to him, but he's not. But Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just in regards to what Mr. Matters just proposed, I did ask the question of Pat. I didn't go back and replay the video, but I distinctly remember, I did look at the approved minutes, which, in which town council opined that the town could surplus the entire parcel or part of the parcel. The actual vote that was taken has no qualification to it. So in effect, this board voted to surplus the entire parcel by a 3 to 2 vote, and I was in the minority with Mr. Matters. It would take a vote of, as we know, and the reason this is here before us now, a vote of the town meeting by two-thirds to go along with whatever the board is submitting to them. I have a second question. I don't mean to interrupt the progress of your question. And then I'm going to have some substantive comments also, and I'll defer those until the appropriate time. I was looking at the assessor's records, and the assessor, and I checked the online database as well as the big book in the town offices, and the assessor's records show that the, the area of this parcel is 0.879 acres, which is the equal, is the equivalent of 38,289 square feet. And that's recited in both locations. On the sketch that you have, you total up the playground area at 32,670 square feet, and the remaining area with the structures at 41,817 square feet. That amounts to 1.71 acres, total of 74,000 square feet. So I went and looked at the, today, at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds, and I was able to find the original deed from the Chatham Railroad Company in 1909 to, I think it's Augustus Ellis, Augustus Ellis. And they recite, that deed recites a total of 1.795 acres, which is consistent with what you have in your plan. So I'm just not sure where you, where you got that. And they have the meets and bounds, well, they have the courses, and I played around with that and got, made sure that that accorded with what they're coming up with the total and with your total. So somebody is incorrect. I would assume, this is a matter of law, that what's on record at the registry would govern, but I was wondering where you got your numbers, because they differ from what is in the assessing department.
Katie, and I looked, Pat's on now, I see him, he's back on. Do you want to speak first, or should we try and talk to Pat?
All right, I'll just answer Dean's question if that's okay. So when we had prepared this, the map to be, to accompany the article, we worked with our GIS planner to create the map, and she had done the calculations based on the square footage of each of those areas that she measured out with the tool within our GIS system.
I appreciate that. Someone, I don't raise this by way of any objection, I just think somebody should communicate with the assessing department, because there seems to be an incompatibility on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Pat, if you're on, Corey had a question, I don't know whether you heard it or not, I noticed you came back on.
Namaste, Chairman, I just got back, happy to answer it, if you can repeat the question.
Sure.
Thank you, Pat. I'm just looking for clarity on a procedural question, because the agenda item tonight reads 127 Old Harbor Road reuse of structure. The vote on January, hold on, on January 11th of this year, the vote, the board voted 3-2 to declare the land at, the land at 127 Old Harbor Road surplus and authorize use for affordable and attainable housing, et cetera, et cetera. It's a distinct difference between just the structure and the, and the complete land. The vote taken is all encompassing, the land, which includes the playground, the house, the barn, the shed. We are, the vote, which I was in the minority of, at least for discussion purposes, I think we need to base our vote that everything was included, whether we agree or don't agree, but I think our vote encompasses all those components.
And I believe that the reformatted article in question does address the entire parcel, does it not? It perpetuates the.
It basically, and I, and I'll quote from the staff reports, where'd it go? I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. Basically, the town will continue to honor the intent of the Marion Nickerson Ellis bequeathed, and will provide all means to further protect and preserve the playground. However, existing structures on the property could be an asset to the community in the form of such needed affordable and attainable housing. And, you know, I respect that position, and we can have further discussion on the merits and opinions and all that. But to, procedurally, excluding the playground from this discussion, are we playing, and I keep using the term cutesy with the, with the process, are we not following proper protocol? Because I would think that if we wanted to exclude the playground, which I fully support, and I think, I think, procedurally, I think philosophically, the board would want to, we would need to revote as a board to declare that, you know, clarification for purposes. My issue, and the reason I'm bringing this up, is following that 3-2 vote, and the, at least, the understanding by some voters that that cleared everything, lock, stock, barrel, there were differences of opinions, whether we should, you know, are we getting enough benefit of only getting one unit? Well, we could take, take everything down and get multiple units, get, you know, eight bedroom, 10 bedroom units out of it. How much can we, how dense can we go? So I think to, and I'm strictly speaking on a mechanical perspective right now, the vote on, on the initial vote of 3-2, put everything on the table. Excluding the playground, does it or does it not need another vote from this board for clarification purposes?
I don't believe it does, Corey, because the, the article, as it was recently revised, addresses two, both components of the property. The 41,817 plus or minus square feet is going to be dedicated to the purpose of affordable or attainable housing. Then there's an additional clause in there to confirm that prospective use of that portion of the subject parcel presently dedicated to playground use shall be maintained exclusively for such playground use. So that basically encompasses the entire parcel that the board did vote to declare surplus. So I'd consider declaring surplus. So I think that the, the vote and the article work, work together, and procedurally, we should be fine.
All right. I'll accept the town council's opinion. I don't quite agree, but I will accept it.
Jeff first, and then Dean, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, we voted to place this article on the 2022 Annual Town Meeting warrant. Tonight, I would like to move that we vote to support that warrant article.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Dean, we have some discussion.
I'm happy to speak to the motion, but I did have a question for Pat Costello, if, if I could ask about that assessing. Pat, I don't know if you caught what I said earlier, but there is a discrepancy between what's on the assessor's records, it's a significant discrepancy, and what is available at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds. Now, I could only find the 1909 deed, there wasn't anything filed for the, shouldn't there have been a notation on the record of the will, the probate of the will back in 1971? And maybe there was, I didn't, I just did a quick search to see if there was anything from Mr. Ellis. But anyway, the original deed shows 1.7, which is consistent with what Katie, so which would govern? And because that has a bearing on the assessed value, I would think, if you, if the assessors assess this at 38,000 square feet, it would be a different assessment, I suspect, at 74,000 square feet.
Right. The only description of the parcel that we've utilized is the address, 127 Old Harbor Road, with reference to the assessor's map and lot number, so that's the parcel we've been going by. By all means, we would want to clarify any ambiguities or discrepancies in the description of the parcel. I would suggest, Dean, that I'll take a more careful look at the records of the assessors with the assessor, we'll try to nail this down, and in the motion, the final motion that's presented to town meeting, we add some clarifying language in there. I do think that the description set forth in the article with the, the address and the assessor's parcel number would give voters of town meeting sufficient notification as to what land we're talking about. It really comes down to fine tuning or nailing down the actual area of the parcel. And that is something we could do in the motion.
Thank you, Pat. Mr. Chairman, if I could speak to the motion.
Just, yeah, sure, one comment. Do we have to change the original motion that Jeff had in relation to what the town council just said?
No.
Okay. All right, Dean, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will try to be brief, and I do, I say what I'm going to say respectfully. I'm not going to vote in favor of the motion, just as I opposed it when it came before us previously. As I just pointed out, the property, according to our assessors, is assessed at $636,700. If, in fact, the property is almost double in size from what the assessors have on their records, the assessment would be significantly higher. And I suspect also that in today's real estate market, given that this, these structures are set back significantly from a main street with frontage on that street, that, that if this were on the market, it would draw a significant price if it were to be put on the market. So if you take that and then you add what is, as yet, an unknown cost for remodeling these houses, or whatever you want to do, renovating these houses for livability, I would think that would run several hundred thousand dollars. So you're talking about something, a parcel that's valued, a parcel that would have a value of in excess of a million dollars. And as I said previously, I think that's a meager return on investment for one or two dwelling units. We also have no assurance that the occupants would be, would even be chas- We also have no assurance that the occupants would be, would even be Chatham residents. And we've heard people say, well, we should let a teacher stay there, or a firefighter, or a police officer, or so forth, but there's no guarantee. We don't even know how many units you can have, if you can have more than one. I think if you have two, maybe one could be allowed for local preference, Katie can comment on that, as she has previously. We've talked about the deed restrictions that have been placed, and we've read the rather involved legal opinion that Pat has given to us, and the conclusions that he's reached, which I accept. And he's pointed out that, he raised an additional question that Mr. West raised earlier about whether there was some sort of contractual obligation in 1971, and Pat outlined a way of dealing with that. But, I still think, and to put it bluntly, that cutting up Mrs. Ellis's property, Ms. Ellis's property, in this way, dishonors her intent. And, I've mentioned previously that we have an elementary school whose future we're trying to protect. We are going to, we put forward a budget that's going to reflect, and once we get the school budgets in, an additional $900,000 to protect the elementary school. We're talking about, and considering, placing the senior center at the community center, or using community center rooms for a senior center that, whose building might be located at the present location. That's all part of a very large complex, which I think is in flux, and I think it's premature to be putting an encumbrance on this property at the present time. And finally, as I've said, this proposal makes a very tiny dent in the town's housing obligations. We're supposed to have 10% in terms of a subsidized housing index. We got a communication within the last 24 hours from school committee member Danielle Atali, who pointed out that in order to reach that 10% goal, we would have to have 175 additional housing units. If we take this one-off approach, do one of these a year, it will take us 175 years to get to that 5%. There are better ways to deal with the housing problem than what I submit is really a distraction, and it allows some of the supporters, I don't include my colleagues on this board, or not everyone in this town, but some people, I think, will vote for this because it makes them feel good, that they're doing something about housing, and they'll vote down other more significant approaches to solving the housing problem. So, for those reasons, I'm going to oppose Mr. Dykens' motion very respectfully. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Shereen and Jeff, and then back to you, Corey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm going to disagree with Sleckman-D Castro to some degree. We've talked a lot about our housing issues in this community, and we approach a project, and we're going to hear why it shouldn't belong here. We're probably going to hear, pretty soon, that we shouldn't be taking down forests, please find existing structures to build, and then, you know, we're looking at this one-off, well, that's not enough, be it right now. And I think this town has spent the last three years going through what we see as plans to be able to create more affordable, year-round housing for folks in this town, to create a more sustainable community. And, yes, this property has a value of $600,000, but I truly believe that a family, or several families, living in that, on that property, would create far much more in what their value is economically to the town of Chatham. I believe that once somebody owns a home in Chatham, they become a Chatham resident, whether they rent or they buy. If they're moving from another community, and they're buying, and they do, and this becomes affordable housing, affordable housing that's going to be sold, they become a resident of the town of Chatham. This kind of opportunity creates a diversity that we need in the community, and potential opportunity for people across the board. I just want to say that, you know, this is, you know, this is a way to add year-round housing while we're also pursuing long-term projects, like we've been doing. And we're facing a housing shortage in this nation, we're facing it on the Cape, particularly in Chatham, and particularly, we're in competition a lot with what's out there, and who's, who wants to live in the town. Much rather see a year-round community member, or a year-round person moving into this town, get that property, rather than it being sold or used for another use. So, I'm going to support Sleckman-Dykens.
Thank you, Shereen. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yeah, it'll be no secret where I land on this issue, I've been a proponent of declaring this property surplus at 127 Old Harbor Road, and having affordable and or attainable housing there. You know, opportunity only comes every once in a while. We've had this property owned by the town for decades, and we have done literally nothing with it. If we thought it was so valuable, that it was more valuable to sell it and put money into free cash, we should have done it decades ago, or we should have done, we should have improved the property. Our crying need in this town is to create a vibrant year-round community, and we have a lot of work to do, we have a lot of catching up to do. So, here is an opportunity, yeah? It's a beautiful area, but what the heck? Really, it's time we started doing what we say we're going to do, and create opportunities for young people in this town. It's time. We are behind the eight ball, guys. So, I feel very strongly that, you know, 127, nice piece of property, you know, I guess, in some jaded way, I'm tired of hearing, I'm in favor of affordable housing, but I'm not in favor of an affordable house. I'm tired of hearing that. Maybe it's located in the wrong place, but, you know, this, this is going to be a beautiful piece of property for a young family here in this town. And I'm very much in favor of its declaration, we've declared a surplus. We heard loud and clear, with clarion call at last town meeting, in an overwhelming vote, that the town supported this. Overwhelming. So, I'm going to continue that sentiment, very much in favor of its development, and look forward to young family and/or families living there in a beautiful home. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Corey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I mean, I got to restate this again, I think people, I think by now, we've talked about this quite some, to quite an extent, that this is not a position of anti-affordable housing, for me. This board collectively, every member sitting at this panel tonight is very supportive of affordable, attainable housing for this town. We've taken great efforts over the last couple of years, we've got some things that we've moved on, things we're going to discuss a little bit later in the evening, things that are hopefully in the pipeline, so we, this board collectively very much supports affordable housing. So, that is, so my position on this is nothing to do with an anti-affordable housing, and I hope it doesn't have to be said, but I'll say it one more time. Couple thoughts. One, previous speaker tonight talked about the legal, moral, and financial position of this property. I agree with two of the three, legal and moral. You know, Ms. Ellis bequeathed this property to the town for a specific reason, you either, you either pay homage to that, or you don't. There's been plenty of times that we've had conversations in this community where we've thrown a project up there, someone goes, well, this family, you know, really, we said, you know, we shouldn't have developed this land, or these were the thoughts of this. You know, we talked about developing over by Volunteer Park, and there was a sentiment, like the budding family, we want to abide by the sentiment that we would not, kind of develop that area. I don't know if it was actually written in black and white, but, you know, we abided by that, we said, fine, that's, that's fine. So, I've always taken issue with the fact that we're bypassing the full sentiment of the owner of this property. From a financial point of view, I wouldn't sell it, I don't care if you've got a $5 million price tag on it. To me, it's more important as a piece to the elementary school. We don't know what the future of the elementary school is going to be. I hope it, I hope it thrives, and I hope it, you know, I hope the numbers grow over the years. I know there's some few people that feel that the elementary school will be gone in, you know, a matter of time. But, if you support the elementary school, you got to look at the big picture. What potential, why would you eliminate the only adjacent parcel to an elementary school for any potential improvements down the road, or expansions? And playing devil's advocate, if you feel that the elementary school is going to close down one day, and that property is going to be redeveloped, again, why would you get rid of the only adjacent parcel to that, you know, to that, to that area? It's bad planning, you know? We've had conversations about this parcel, you know, the water station's been there, you know, COA. I don't think any of the discussions we've had in the past have been really in the spirit of what the property was meant for outside of the playground. So, you know, we haven't really seriously had conversations about this property, things have been thrown around here and there, but it's been lightly done, in my opinion. Town meeting will take a vote on it, that's the process, I respect that. You know, again, it's, you know, we have a lot of truly viable, affordable, attainable options, discussions, that we've got in the works. You know, some will feel this is only one unit, I think others out there, if we do push forward on this, are going to push for a more dense product, you know, that discussion will happen, you know, that's a step-two discussion if this passes the town meeting. So, I just think that I would feel more comfortable in the future, I hope to be on this board for a couple more years, that if it does not pass, you know, for whatever reason, that we actually had to take some serious consideration of what we could use this property for, what the structures are for, within the spirit of Ms. Ellis, whether it be housing for certain students, or something, something in the, in the, the capacity of what it was really meant for, with schooling and the elementary school, and all that spirit, because I think that, I would feel better moving forward with something like that. It's, you know, I don't think we should be quick in dismissing people's wishes when they bequeath property to the town, you know? If we're going to, if we're going to acknowledge their, the playground component of it, but not some, the other part of it, it's kind of a mixed, it's a mixed message to me. So, I, I'm not going to support this, if the town votes in favor of it, so be it, that's the process, but I have issues with us dismissing Mrs. Ellis's wishes, I have issues with, you know, encumbering a piece of property to the elementary school that we don't know what the future's going to be, and from a, you know, leadership perspective, I think we need to be not quick in getting rid of that piece of property, because we don't know what we're going to be needing it for with the future of the elementary school, and that's just my feeling. So, I've said my piece, it'll be voted in May, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Corey, just like the last time, comes down to me. However, I made a comment previously, I mean, at the last board meeting, that I, my vote was changing because of town meeting, that was one of it, that was basically it. And also, at town meeting, we saw a large piece of property that we thought we could develop municipal property, we were going to use half of it, which we're going to get into some of this, you know, for affordable housing over in Middle Road, and that was defeated. And there is also other, another property that we thought we were able to, that was already sort of zoned, that was, we could not, we could not keep, it was, we were outbid. The comment that we have, from a number of places, that we have all these options that we have, really, you know, I agree that Cape Cod Commission, a number of places have said, you know, you really should develop your neighborhood centers for affordable housing, and I agree with that. You know, you have an infrastructure there, but it can't be only there. And it can't, and, and you have to have, in our case, you have to be able to either own it because it's municipal, or we have to go out and buy it, and we see what it costs us to go buy something, so that, so my, my, I'm getting, I'm just getting to the point where if you look at this town, it's 24-something square acres, 16, square acres, square miles. It's, you know, like 16 square miles of land, that means, you know, the rest of it's water. And I haven't looked at it closely, but with the latest Cape Cod Commission report that came out, it's really kind of interesting, if you want to look at what's in there, but it said Chatham has 83% of single-family homes. So, you have 83% single-family homes of, you know, some are secondary, and some are, I don't remember the number that are year-round, but my point is, I have a tough time flopping on this, flipping again on this one, I, seriously. You know, important to me that it's reuse of the existing structure, and also that the playground is not going to be part of it. And I understand where Corey and Dean are both coming from, and in different situation, I might lean towards that, and especially, I could see what Steve, where Steve West is coming from. But, important for the neighborhood is that this, we keep the existing structures and the barn. And I don't know, when I was first here, we were doing cabinetry work, and I was doing gut and junk for Cape, for the Chatham Marconi's, and that building is getting old, and if we don't do something with it, it's going to be gone. A house that sits, it's like anything else, it sits there, and nothing happens, and you don't use it, it's, it's going to go away. So, you know, if we can reuse it, let's reuse it now, and that's my position. So, we have a motion and a second, and I guess we'll take a vote, and we'll start with Shereen.
Aye.
Corey?
Nay.
Dean?
No.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair says aye, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So, Mr. Dykens, can we just confirm, do you, the article as presented in the staff report that we're voting on, or is it with no exclusion of the playground? So, I just wanted to make sure that the board, what we, staff drafted an article, what we thought the board wanted, and I just wanted to make sure, as we, so as it is presented.
I'm in favor of excluding the playground, I think it's good.
Yeah.
I think it's great.
Thank you, I just wanted to confirm, thank you.
It is excluded in the article.
Yeah, it is excluded in the article, yeah, thank you.
Okay, and now, I see our good friend, Jack, in fact, Farrell is here. Welcome. We're going to get to the two zoning, competing zoning bylaws. One is with, has to do with Middle Road, and, well, let me, let me just read it, you know, from the Community Housing Partnership, perpetual conservation restriction on a portion of the town-owned property, and then another one from the Open Space Committee that wants to put all the 19, Middle Road, Goose Pond Forest acre, and conservation land. Both admirable, admirable articles. Let's, let's see, what do I, how do I put it on the agenda? I had the, I had the Middle Road, yeah, Middle Road.
Open space goes first.
Open space goes first. Okay, Jack, welcome. I hope, either one, I think, does it have a green light on the bottom?
It doesn't.
It doesn't?
It does.
It does, okay, fine, welcome. And then what we'll do is, when you're done, Carolyn will speak to the two, and then we can discuss it, if that's okay with the board? Okay. Thanks, Jack.
Thank you very much. I'm pleased to say that this Irish kid pulled off a chicken Parmesan between my trips here early this evening, probably not to Dean de Castro's standards, but certainly to Patrick I'm the chairman of the Open Space Committee, so it should come, it's no surprise as to how the committee feels about taking native woodlands and forests and developing them. If anyone expected us to compromise, is the expression I've heard, I'm not sure where that would have come from. We are members of the Open Space Committee because of how we feel. It's a volunteer position, and we don't get pay raises, so this is strictly how we feel about the future of the town, protecting it for the next generations. So, I just say that because in our previous meeting with the Housing Partnership, unanimously, the members of our committee are all in favor of housing in this community, it's obvious as the nose on my face that we need it. So, the question is just, where do you put it? We're not talking about, you know, building a state prison in your backyard, this isn't, from our perspective, a NIMBY situation, it's just a question of what's the appropriate place for the housing. The geographical location in the town... The geographical location in the town, being out in the, the middle of Middle Road is high, is, to our feeling, not highly attractive for housing. I know that previously the COA was looking to develop the property. And frankly, it's, it's reaching for the low-hanging fruit because the property is sitting right there. The neighboring Dubus property has been turned into the solar array back in the 1980s. The local young conveyancing attorney got 27 building lots approved on the Dubus property. And so, there was an opportunity for 10,000-square-foot lots to be developed out there into hopefully affordable housing, but that never came to pass. And now it's a solar array. There have been several other possibilities that we would like to see the Housing Partnership pursue. I'm sure they have to some extent. But we see our neighboring communities, rather than going into our forests, we see them repurposing existing developed properties. For instance, Harwich is turning a, an elderly housing complex into housing. Orleans has got the Governor Prince Motel that they're turning into housing. And the original operations center for the Cape Cod Five and Savings Bank is, is becoming housing. So, there, there are many other examples of other surrounding communities repurposing existing properties. When, when we looked around the community, you know, some of the things we've seen just makes it hard for us to support not pursuing these existing properties and just going into virgin forest. For instance, Eastern Ho, Ho Country Club, as you know, purchased the condominium apartments right across from the Dunkin' Donuts just a year or two ago. So, I mean, there's readily built, relatively new, two-bedroom, fully, fully operational, modern apartments that have been turned into employee housing for, you know, private property owner, but that could have made a fantastic housing property for the town to have acquired. Right across the street is the Chatham Motel next to the Dunkin' Donuts, and I'm now told that that's just gone under contract to a local restaurant for employee housing. Perhaps that had some possibilities, but, you know, there, there are any number of properties, for instance, much closer to town in better locations. What conversations have taken place with the Dubus family about their extensive pit? The rumor on the street is that the family is going to be phasing out the business at some point. The McIntyre Pit, not far from there, another undeveloped property, much closer to town, much closer to the services, much closer to the schools. We have a highway department taking up a beautiful parcel of property on Crowell Road. Does the highway department need to be in that location on Crowell Road? We discussed moving it up to this location, south of Middle Road, 30 years ago, when we were talking about building the annex. Great location for housing. Matter of fact, your housing authority has elderly housing right across the street. So, there are a lot of other possibilities that it seems to us have not been exhausted or have, have not been pursued in a timely fashion before we should be delving into native forest land. So, based upon all of those, plus our predisposition for open space and conservation, this is our explanation for the purpose of our request to turn into a permanent conservation restriction. So, bear with me, and I'll just try to read this through, not so much for your benefit, as I assume you've probably read it, but for the people listening at home. These last 19 acres of Goose Pond Forest are part of the last significant, unfragmented coastal pine barren forest in Chatham, second in size only to the town forest. The acres include isolated wetlands presumed to be vernal pools that are unique habitat for amphibians and invertebrates that depend upon the wetland for survival. Large wooded areas such as this forest provide critical habitat requirements for a wide variety of wildlife, including great horned owls, eastern box, box turtles, fox, deer, coyote, and others that are being squeezed out of other areas of town. The forest also supports a robust native plant community, a key to maintaining a resilient ecosystem from the future impacts of climate change. Goose Pond Forest is important to groundwater replenishment, preserving water quality by absorbing rainwater, reducing runoff, and cleaning the water through natural filtration. Forests remove carbon from the atmosphere and store it in plant tissues above and below ground. This value cannot be discounted when we know firsthand the impacts of a changing climate due to too much carbon dioxide in the atmosphere. Chatham is committed to mitigating climate change, and preserving trees and open areas contribute to that effort. The value of this, this land checks all of the boxes of the criteria that the town's Open Space Committee looks for in its charge to bring properties forward for the town to acquire. For example, it is contiguous to other protected open space. The land is largely undisturbed, except for public use of trails and off-trail bicycles, and it sounds like our teenagers are using it. And it lies within the DEP-approved Public Water Supply Wellhead Protection Area. We have lost acres of other town-protected forest for water department infrastructure, and will lose more as the town develops additional wells and treatment facilities. Our wild areas continue to be under pressure from direct development and human use. Development of any part of the Goose Pond Forest land will significantly diminish the values and function of the forest, and the Open Space Committee believes it serves the town's best interest to be preserved in its natural state. Goose Pond Forest is our natural heritage and should be protected for future generations. Once it's gone, it's gone forever. That's the explanation from the Open Space Committee for our position on this article. I'm happy to answer any questions, attempt to answer any questions which the board might have.
Thank you, Jack. Jack, I understand. Dean has a question, but I'm going to be just a little devil's advocate, because we're, this board, for four years, was really taken, tried to take a really aggressive action on affordable and affordable housing. And we've even been recognized in some ways, not always positively at the state level for what we're trying to do. And I accept that. So, and how much, and it's not a pejorative question, how much conservation land do we have? I mean, you were, you had the land trust, you came to, I remember when we talked about Old Queen Anne Road, and we bought, bought that property with the last bit of money for the land trust, which I thought was a great idea.
Those are the three Atwood properties on the north side of Goose Pond.
That was, I, I thought that was great. In any case, you know how much conservation land we have? I heard like 1,000 acres, then I heard from somebody else, 2,000 acres. And then, not only that, but restrictions. And I'm not going to use that as a benchmark, I just want to put it in perspective.
I'm not, I'm not the expert to quote exact figures. I serve two roles in this, in this land conservation environment. One is my role as the chair of the Open Space Committee, which was the successor to the Land Bank Open Space Committee, which went from 2000 to 2020. During the 20 years of the Land Bank, I believe we put aside about 150 acres. The town owns much more conservation land than that, but I'm not in a position to really cite a number on that. And my other role is that I'm the chairman of the Land Acquisition Committee for the Chatham Conservation Foundation. So, I've got a hat that's split right down the middle, and hopefully serves both interests. And the foundation, I think, has close to 1,000 acres, and it's 65 years, 60 years, I guess it's 60 years this year of its existence. So, there's a lot of good work that's been done. Chatham, as you know, is close to build-out. Most of what we, we see is reconstruction of existing housing stock, sort of putting the, the tire pump in and blowing it up and making it four times larger. The pressure, the pressure on Chatham's natural resources has been severe since it really took off, since the town took off in the 80s. We are a sole-source aquifer. One of the reasons we have a town water system now, and we've, we're doing this town sewer system, you know, all since I arrived here in 1975. So, you know, the pressure, the pressure is on our natural resources. Our embayments are the lifeblood of our summer population and, and our attractiveness. So, that's what we've been protecting with all of this infrastructure investment. So, this is all part of the big picture of how you keep Chatham, Chatham for the future. It's, it's going to be fabulous till the day I die, but, you know, my son's looking to move back onto Cape Cod, and, you know, so we're working for that generation, you know, and the next generation, to make sure it still is the Chatham that we know and love. So, once we start down the slippery slope of saying, let's compromise on a parcel of a forest of, of conservation, what should, in our opinion, be conservation land, that's really not a, really a tenable position for an Open Space Committee to take. So, though I'm wearing a black sweater, I'm not wearing a black hat, and we are not in any way, shape, or form in opposition to affordable housing. I think if anyone heard our joint meeting with the Housing Partnership, I even volunteered my personal services to assist them in working on any of those other parcels I mentioned earlier, to try and make something happen for them and for the community.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Yeah, I have one question about those, those, the number of those parcels which were gone. I mean, you know, we're starting from where we are. They were private, they were private, private, between two private parties.
They listed on the market for sale.
Yeah. And we also put out RFPs to the, to the, they wanted to sell it to us. And I'm not saying, some will say, well, you should aggressively go and go, go, go look for those people. We have, how many RFPs have you put out? Three?
Yeah, three cycles.
Yeah, they've been recycled, you know? It's not like we're not looking for them. It's, it's not, and it's the question, there's some sort of a legal question on how far you can go, but you whisper in somebody's ear and say, you know, how about selling it to the town? I can get more money over here. So, that's our problem. I get what you say in New Orleans, I mean, New Orleans, in Orleans, in Brewster, they're recycling stuff. Cape Cod Five left. The building was vacant. Cape Cod Five is a community-oriented organization. The, the other one you talked about was vacant. If we had that, you think we wouldn't stop and get it? I don't see anything vacant around. That's my, my problem. And I'm not criticizing you, because I, I agree with you. I don't want Chatham to turn into something other than what it is. But in any case, and compromises, in my mind, is, is a different thing. It's balance. We have serious problems here. We have serious problems here. Somehow, we have to make that work. And I understand where you're coming from, and I was just saying what affordable housing comes, comes from, but there has to be a balance. Otherwise, who's going to enjoy it? A bunch of old people, like me. In any case, Dean had his hand up, and then Shereen, I'm sorry.
I think Jeff had a question. I do have a question, but I think Jeff had numbers.
Oh, Jeff, okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to weigh in on some numbers I got today from, the total land area of Chatham is 16.43 square miles, or 10,515 acres. So, 16 square miles, 10,500 acres. The town-owned conservation land, we have about 41,561,604 square feet, or 954 acres of either town-owned conservation land and/or private conservation land. So, 954 acres. So, if you take the 954 over the 10,5, about 9% of the total land area in, in Chatham has been conserved, if you will. And I would, I would submit, I would opine even, that we've done a better job on preserving open space than we had for creating affordable housing. Mr. Farrell?
I won't argue that. Just for the record, for those who were around 40 years ago, Dick Batchelder and I, we're trying to get the town's interest in affordable housing to purchase what is now Bailey's Path and the Frog Pond property next to Pace, which is now, whatever the name of that road is. So, to be honest, this isn't something that we're new to, affordable housing. I'm being painted as being on the other side of the argument here because of my position in open space, but my standing on open housing, I think, is well-established.
In fact, in fact, I don't mean to paint that brush at all, Mr. Farrell. In fact, the speakers that spoke earlier this evening, including yourself, but Rick Levitt and Teddy Lucas and Kristin Andres, I have enormous amount of respect for, Frank Messina as well, enormous amount of respect for, and really appreciate their input. And it is a beautiful forest. But at some point, and we'll have this argument, it'll be debated, but at some point, we do have to strike a better balance here in this town, because we are behind the, we, we have, we have, we have a lot of ground to make up on the affordable housing side. We do, we do not have a vibrant year-round community here. We need more young people, we need more young people in the schools, and living here, and working here, and thriving here. So, love that forest, and, but we've been beaten, and be honest with you, I feel as though we've been beating our head against the wall for the last three or four, five years here on this board, just beating our heads against the wall. And it's been very, very frustrating to find a location for perhaps more dense housing or, and affordable housing, beating our heads. So, anyway, some frustration, I think, is evident, if you will. Thank you. But I, I totally get it, and I really get the folks that spoke earlier this morning, or earlier this evening, I should say as well.
I think we all do. To be, to be, just to be honest, I'm not being facetious when I say that every single member of the Open Space Committee is 100% in favor of housing for this community. If you listen to the, the tape of our meeting, I mean, they were very clear, you know, for the public to hear. It's just a question of where that, that this housing needs to be. And in the middle of, Middle Road, in that, you know, untouched forest is not necessarily our choice.
Again, I'm not, I guess I'm not going to debate it too much. I guess I will. Four acres kind of near the road, where there are other developments along that road, one more recent, just beyond it to the west, a very large development, and then the solar array to the east. So, that road has been subject to quite some development, and frankly, you know, a lot of the, that beautiful land has been developed as well. And I'll, I'll stop there.
No, thank you. I had Dean and then Shereen.
I'm willing to defer my question of Jack until after Shereen speaks.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Jack, how are you?
How are you, Shereen?
Good. And I used to be the liaison to the Open Space Committee and enjoyed, enjoyed this short stint that I had, I don't think it was about a year, but I did appreciate the work you did for the Twine Field, and my family appreciates that committee and helping bring that forward to the town. Jack, just to make it clear, everybody brings up the DPW issue, and that would be a great place for affordable housing, but there's a dump under there, and it's a cap dump, and so it's not a possibility at all, just to clarify that one thing. And as an example, I'm saying that because we have vetted out the, a lot of properties in the town, and we've looked at, you know, a lot as, as advocates for housing to see where and where we may not be able to do stuff. And as I had mentioned before, with the Old Harbor Road property, we've looked at all different ways to do things, because there's not just one fix. And so, to just further explain this compromise and how it came to be, was when there was the advocates for wanting to preserve the land and seeing that the, you know, people were still looking at the Affordable Housing Committee. I think Jill and I had the conversation when I was chair, is that why can't we get the two factions together? And maybe not, it shouldn't have been framed as a compromise, it should have been framed as a collaboration, because oftentimes you see affordable housing or, or housing developments budding conservation land in complement of each other. Passive recreation, as an example for that neighborhood, has been that that neighborhood has used that land as passive recreation, maybe a little more than that with the dirt bikes that have gone through there, but it has been used and enjoyed by, by folks and respected and honored. I personally don't feel that four acres up by the road is going to be a game-changer for the area. I think it will be an enhancement to a quality of life that people have enjoyed there. I don't have a question for you. I respect that this is coming forward. I respect that we weren't able to find that collaboration. You clearly laid out at the meeting of the Community Housing Partnership that you were sticking to the mission of your, of your committee. I totally respect that. And I think that this is going to be two competing articles, you know? I think in the spirit, we will probably have, should be placing both of them on the warrant so that the town can decide that. And with that, I'm going to thank you for your due diligence on this work that you've done today.
Thank you, Dean.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter. Jack, just to add something to what Peter was saying, and, and as an attorney, you're familiar with, with this. We're, we're limited by the state procurement laws and what we can do, in terms of approaching people and asking them to sell us their property. The other point I'll make on that regard is that, and I've been on this board for almost seven years, and I think Jeff's been the longest, nine, nine years on this board. And I, and the very, there has been almost, you can count on one hand the number of prospects that, you know, we have discussed in executive session, and too many of them have fallen through because the potential seller decided to go elsewhere. But the reason I wanted to speak is, I'm the current liaison to your committee, and I have great respect for your members. And at the last meeting, George Cooper said something that I've been thinking about since the meeting, and it's sort of reflected in the explanation you read. You have a line there, it's the- You have a line there, it's right at the bottom, almost at the bottom, "Development of any part of the Goose Pond Forest land will significantly diminish the value, values and function of the forest." And George said something to the effect that, you know, we can't compromise because it's all important, and you can't just take away a piece of it. I want, I just wanted to ask if you could elaborate a little bit about that, because it's, it's stuck with me.
I think you need George to elaborate on that, to be honest.
But on the, on the statement that I just read.
Right. Those were, that was George's personal opinion, and I don't disagree with him, but I also don't feel like I'm qualified to be elaborating on his.
Yeah, forget the word compromise. I'm getting at the point that, you know, he was basically saying you can't segment out a piece of this. And I want to know why.
Well, I think I mentioned earlier that we would consider this a very slippery slope for any land conservation committee, open space committee, whatever, to start getting, going down the road of compromising the open space and conservation lands with a development interest, whether the development interest be housing, which is fantastic interest, or whether it's tennis courts, or, you know, a new Little League field, or, you know, whatever that interest is, you know, de jour. I don't think it's a good philosophical position or practical position for an open space conservation-based committee to be entering into those types of considerations. Our job and our charge is to make recommendations to your board as to what we think is in the best interest of the community for open space, and that it's really your position to make that decision, and ultimately, the voters.
I appreciate that philosophical and policy statement. I think that's what you just gave. I respect that. I just wondered, is there something about this particular property that fragmenting a piece out destroys the rest of it? Because we've got some emails that suggest that, and I, I'm trying to understand that.
Well, again, if you are truly a conservationist, then this is threatening, a real threatening action to take land that, though it was not subjected to a conservation restriction, was always considered and thought of as open space forest lands owned by the town that was not going to be developed. So, I don't really see how any member of a committee such as ours, you know, would ever be comfortable in contemplating, you know, the destruction of that open space for whatever purpose.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you very much.
Good, thank you. I can leave that too.
All right, well, I'll just throw my two cents in. We spoke about this, we bumped into each other at Stop &amp; Shop one day. Amazing how many people you see at the supermarket when you're trying to get in and out, but anyway. I, I, I respect the position of the Open Space Committee, and I, and I say this in as a positive way, I'm not surprised by the position. You're doing exactly what you're charged to do, you're consistent with past actions. To, to, to go anywhere outside that box would have been more of a surprise to me. So, you know, the information and the positions and the statements that have been made are all in line of past actions, so I can respect that. We're going to get a, you know, a presentation on, from the, quote, "the other side" in the housing, and frankly, you know, I would have seen them maybe ask for more aggressive housing, but they're looking for a compromise discussion. Both, both, you know, the conservation component and the housing component are two correct paths. You're focused in one direction under one lens, they're focused on another direction under another lens. We get to mediate and figure out philosophically, you know, what might be the better recommendation this board will make in supporting the articles. I would expect, I'd frankly be very surprised that this board didn't put, place both the articles on the town meeting warrant for, you know, for debate and discussion. We'll make our recommendations, but I think they're, they both deserve to be placed on the warrant. You know, I, I think the compromise is going to have some merit, because those who have lived in that area, you know, it's Chatham. Whether you live in North Chatham, South Chatham, West Chatham, 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 Chatham's a beautiful town. I grew up in South Chatham, and the people have made, you know, off-colored comments of, oh, it's South Chatham. Hey, I'll live in South Chatham any day of the week. I loved it there, you know, beautiful part of the town. But my point is, you know, those who live in this area, they cleared a lot, they built their house, they developed it, and they're enjoying the land. And I think, you know, and this is from, this is where we come in, philosophically, I think carving out some, a couple acres of that area to build housing that is compatible, and I stress is compatible with the neighborhood, is an appropriate path. You know, we'll make our own recommendations on that, yea or nay, but I think every party's done their due diligence to put the position out there, and we're forced to kind of make a decision on this land, because whether it should be developed or not developed, and to what degree it is developed, or what it's developed for, because all these conversations have finally kind of bubbled up. So, every party's done their due diligence. I hope we can make appropriate recommendations. I know where I fall on, on the, on the two subjects, but, you know, I do appreciate the Open Space Committee's commitment and steady, you know, position that I would have expected from the group. So, I, I thank you for your, for your time.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. No, thank you, Jack. We should probably have Carolyn give her presentation online, and you could stay for a little bit. We may have more questions, I don't know.
I can say.
You okay?
Sure. Thank you very much.
No, thank you. And by the way, I, I like the answer you gave to Dean. I mean, buck stops here is basically what it says, and that's true.
Right. Let me, let me just say, since I'm wearing, you know, I didn't get the black hat, I got the black shirt. This is my coach's shirt from over at Montemoy, and this year, we've got our largest graduating class in this program, five boys and three girls, and the best we've ever had, and Jason Metris is one of the finest young men we've ever had.
Okay, well, hello, Carolyn.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can. You're up. Thank you.
Well, good evening, everybody, and I just want to thank you all. I, I can't tell you how much respect I have for all of you. This is an incredibly long meeting. I don't know how you do it, week after week. And Peter, I'm very sorry to see that you're not going to continue with the board, but I understand you have things you need to take care of, but I certainly, I have valued working with you over the, over the years, and I wish you all the best. And Jeff, I'm glad you're sticking with us, and I look forward to working with you in the future. I just also want to point out, sitting here tonight, we've, I've heard about three different parcels concerning housing. One, planes might land on, so maybe, maybe not, that will be developed. The second one is a pre-existing building that may be too valuable for housing, and now it's open land. So, I just want to point out, there's always a reason why housing might not happen. I have a prepared statement, so I'm just going to go ahead and read that, and then we can, if you want, you can have, I'll answer some questions. The Partnership recognizes the need for a holistic approach when trying to reconcile the many interests of town. We understand that both housing initiatives and open space preservation are vital for the sustainability of our community. We feel that compromise provides us with an opportunity to judiciously allocate our resources in a way that can benefit both of these interests. We are offering to designate 15 acres to conservation and develop the remaining four plus or minus acres for housing. The acreage we want to use for housing is closest to Middle Road, and in the southern most, five-acre section proposed last year. The lot itself is furthest away from Goose Pond and does not affect the wildlife corridor. We feel this area could be developed into an affordable, attainable, year-round neighborhood, which we all know we desperately need. We did try to discuss this compromise with the Open Space Committee. The Open Space Committee was absolute in their inability to embrace a solution that would be beneficial to everyone. The chair said that he wouldn't vote for this until all of the possibilities were exhausted. As an alternative, as he suggested here, they have, and many others have suggested, that we buy land that is privately owned and not even currently for sale. I'm not sure if he and others understand how the town is allowed to acquire land. The town can't simply buy property even if it's for sale. The owner must respond to an RFP. Obviously, this is very limiting in the number of parcels we might get. Perhaps we've not done a good enough job in educating the public as to the complexities we must navigate when trying to acquire land, because it's critical that the public understand what are realistic options. Now, I hope we might get the parcels that he did suggest, but we need them in addition to Middle Road, not instead of Middle Road. We're not going to get, do one development and then have it done. There's going to have to be multiple developments made. And I know you, all of you on the Sledwood are really trying to find solutions, and I'm truly appreciative of your efforts of trying to be problem solvers. While watching one of the earlier Open Space meetings, one of the members asked why other towns are so good at developing housing. Now, I have had conversations all the time with our lower and outer Cape housing advocates, and I've asked them the same question. One town administrator just looked at me and said, Carolyn, in our town, we have made a commitment to housing. Every decision we make in this town, we ask, is this good or bad for housing? Can we do anything to improve it, how it will affect housing? That's every decision across all the departments. Now, that's how you solve problems, and that's why they're making significant gains in developing housing. Now, in Chatham, in the last 10 years, we have produced only seven units. That's seven single units in the last 10 years. And as you know, we're hovering at about, just about 5% for a subsidized housing inventory. Now, let's look at what some of the other towns are doing. In Provincetown, that little tiny town on the end of the Cape that's surrounded by beach dunes and has many conservation restrictions on how they develop their land. In the last 10 years, now again, we have done seven, in the last 10 years, Provincetown has developed 119 rentals and seven ownership parcels. And they have pending 80-plus or minus rentals and five ownership. I mean, that's an incredible amount. In Eastham, 67 rental units have been developed in the last 10 years. And I believe they're working on the Tea Time Parcel, which is on Route 6, which will be a significant increase in their numbers. Orleans is at 10%, and that's before you add the development they've, for the Cape Cod Five. I don't have Bruce's numbers yet, but they've done quite well, and they've actually just, they just passed it. Their more recent town meeting, a parcel of land, very similar to Middle Road, in that it was already forested, it had a lot of abutters, and they just approved it. They're going to put a bunch of properties, a bunch of units in there, so they're going to greatly increase their, their housing units also. So, again, compared to our neighbors, we're doing absolutely horrible. What excuse can we possibly have for our lack of progress? All these towns have different opportunities and challenges, and there is no easy path that leads to housing, but they work through and they don't stop until they get results. I'm not going to recite a bunch of housing stats, we all know them. The problem isn't recognizing the need for housing. We all recognize the need for housing. The problem is being willing to compromise so that we can sustain our year-round population. There is no one solution that will make everyone happy, but there are solutions that will offer something for everyone. Most, if not all, the opposition to this article claim that the environment is the most important thing. I genuinely appreciate the concern for our fragile ecosystem, and that's why we feel committing 75% of this lot to conservation is an appropriate compromise. There are lots of things all of us can do to protect our environment. Every week, I read the Chronicle and the many wonderful articles in the conservation page, which suggests how we can all be better stewards of our community. I don't know why I can't hear those same voices that so vehemently oppose our article, focusing on starting a campaign in town to support those ideas, like encouraging homeowners to plant pollinators and increase indigenous plants, insisting pollinators be planted on town-owned parcels, discouraging manicured lawns. These are things we all can do. Conservation is a responsibility that should be shared by all of us. It can't be a burden exclusively placed on those trying to find year-round housing. We are certain that this compromise will not only offer protection to some of our natural environment, but also preserve another precious endangered resource, our year-round communities. So, that's what I have for you folks. I'd be happy to answer any questions if I can.
Thank you, Carolyn. Dean?
Thank you, Peter. Hi, Carolyn. I just wanted to ask a question. I appreciate the, the effort that your, your partnership has made in this particular issue. And I understand that if this, if your proposal were adopted, the portion of the property that would be utilized for housing would, as it were to proceed to development, would involve community input on what might go there, and there probably would have to be some zoning change, because I think it's all zone municipal right now. But allowing for all of that, do you have any guesstimate as to how many units you could possibly put on there in reasonable fashion without making it overly crowded? Have you thought about that, or members of the community thought about that?
I certainly have, and I have, I have my own ideas, but as you know, this is a process that's, I don't get, I don't get to decide what happens there. It's going to be a process where we have a lot of community input. You had one speaker very hours and hours ago mention that he could support it only if it had multiple dwellings on it, not individual homes. So, all that's going to have to be vetted out in the process. So, it's hard to say what, what it's going to be. I, I would think if we did single homes, you could do tiny little houses on tiny little lots, and maybe you'd get 15 to 18 houses in that section. If you do townhouses or multifamily units, maybe you'd get more. I mean, we don't want to overload the property, but we want to get a bang for a buck. We want to build it with an increased density and still be appreciative of the natural surrounding. But all that will be vetted out in the public process.
Okay, thank you very much.
Shereen?
I feel it's necessary for me to say something. I'm the liaison to the Community Housing Partnership, and I know that you have done your due diligence on this property several times. And in, in the meetings, when you looked at the two parcels that were proposed last time, it was immediate to me, Carolyn, that the committee was, was not going to go in that direction at all, that they were going to look at a smaller, a smaller project for that, understanding some of the concerns and wishes of, of the neighbors. There is affordable housing in that neighborhood, am I correct?
Yes, right on the other side, there's the three Habitat Houses that are right there.
And it's abutting the, the property that's going for conservation?
Their road, I don't know what, back road, whatever it is that separates it.
Okay. I don't think it's the intent, I, I read on Facebook today that one of the proponents of, of the, of, of the conservation of the land was saying that this was going to be a high-density, you know, big project, and, and I'm glad that you brought up that this is going to be a community vetting, a process to be able to, to get, to find out what the town wants. It's not my intention to see anything huge and large there. I mean, it's, you know, it's a nice neighborhood, people have lived there year-round, though towards the end of, towards 137, there's more high-end houses in that development, I think, I can't, Williams Way or whatever it is, that seem to be a little fancier than just, you know, a very modest three-bedroom home or two-bedroom home. I, I just want to say again that I think, you know, I appreciate the work that both these committees do, and we nominated every single one of the people that are on these committees, and they've done really great work. And I, I want to see that both of these articles head to town meeting. I'm not, as again, I'm, I'm pretty sure that I'd prefer to recommend myself the four acres with, obviously, the four acres with the 15 acres in, in conservation, as a matter of a, I hate to use the word competition or compromise, because I don't think it is. I think it's a collaboration of the two, two intentions of the, of the, of, of the people that we've nominated here to, to work for us and do good, good work. So, I'm going to leave it at that.
Can I just clarify one thing?
Sure, go ahead.
Sure, I just, when I say the word density, I'm not talking about excessively building a lot. I'm implying that whatever we build there will be as tight as can be and still be, you know, a nice, healthy, attractive environment, not to spread out the, spread out the units all over the parcel if not necessary.
Yeah, I'm going to play devil's advocate a little with you, Carolyn.
Sure.
For that piece of property, we've heard in a couple of issues, times, that, okay, that piece of property is out in Middle Road, you know, you're going to put affordable housing there. Affordable housing really shouldn't be out there. Affordable housing should be in a neighborhood center, because you have walking paths, and you have, you know, a neighborhood center there, you can catch public transportation, somehow you're going to get to town. So, the implication is, we're talking about affordable, and you mentioned attainable housing, people there are not going to have cars, I mean, are they're not going to be... I mean, are they're not going to be supported or, you know, just, can you characterize? Why would you want to put them? Why would you want to put them there if, if that's the case?
Sure. Well, as Shereen pointed out, there's already three units there. I think, I deal, as you know, I also work with Habitat, and I, I'm on the front lines doing interviews with applicants all the time, and I can say hands down, every applicant I've ever interviewed would love to live in that neighborhood. They, the, the bus, you can go down to Middle Road, to 137, you're on a main artery. Even though you folks look at it and say it's all the way out of town, it's also closer to the rest of, I mean, it's close to 130, to Stop and Shop in that area up there. There's bus transportation there. I know Tracy Cannon, who works at the Housing Authority, has already said that, like, if there's a strong demand, you can always call the bus company, and they will do loops. In terms of it being a livable neighborhood and pleasant neighborhood, the bike path is right near there, there are ponds near there. I live not that far from there. I live right on, you know, where I live, right on 137. My, my son's best friend was two doors down from that lot. They'd go there all the time and play. It, it's a great family neighborhood. Cory's grown up in that general area, not on Middle Road, but just south Chatham. It's not a million miles away from everything. It would be a beautiful neighborhood. I don't know of anybody who I've ever interviewed or whoever needs housing, I'm sure the two, two women who, who came in crying into Tracy's office today would be more than happy to live on Middle Road. I think that would be a wonderful neighborhood for a year-round community. And I think all the abutters who are here, who are, have voiced their opposition to this, they love living in their area. I mean, that's, that's their home, and they love it. So, I think it would be a great asset to the town to have a year-round community there.
Okay. Thank you, Carolyn. Jeff had it.
Yeah, no, I'm, I, I think it's appropriate to bring both of these to town meeting. I think it's, I think it's great. I think both committees have done a heck of a good job, obviously, addressing the, addressing their passions and their charges, their mission. I, I also think that four acres for affordable housing there and 15 acres for conservation is, is the way I lean. I certainly think that, you know, we're not going to solve the affordable housing issue with one-offs here and there. It's going to take a whole bunch of different fronts to, to play, to play catch-up, because we are playing catch-up. And Carolyn, your stats, I think, portrayed that here in Chatham. Seven units over 10 years is, is not a great track record. So, I think, I think we have to, I think we have to, we have to act, and we hopefully will be acting. We've acted on 127. Hopefully, the town will agree with us there, and hopefully, we can get four acres here to, to develop, and we can get some affordable housing cooking here. But I really do appreciate the expertise, the time, the attention, and the passion that both of these committees have brought, brought to, to the Select Board this evening and that we'll also bring to town meeting. It'll be, it'll be a very good debate. Thank you, Carolyn. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
I agree. Dean, let me ask a question. Can we put both, move to put them both on?
I was going to offer a motion. I was, I'm about to offer a motion, but I would like to make a statement. I was going to offer a motion to place.
Okay.
Get that voted, and then I'd like to make a statement before we have, I think we should have, if it's, if they're both placed, I think we should have separate votes on each article for a recommendation.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, I move that we place both of these articles on the annual town meeting warrant for May 2022.
Do we have a second? We have a second discussion? Okay, Shereen?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Place?
I guess we should go with the, the open space one, because that's listed first. So, I, I'm going to move that we recommend approval of the open space committee's article for, to town meeting.
Second? Okay. Any discussion?
Yes. I'll make the statement now. I'm going to get my notes here. I really struggled with this. Following the town meeting vote in May, I was very sympathetic to some sort of a compromise approach, and I had conversations, I know with, with Shereen about this. I'm using the word compromise because it's been used, but I actually like Peter's comment better, that it's a description, that it's a balance that we're trying to achieve. Then, as I mentioned earlier, I, I heard George Cooper's comment, and I've seen some emails, and I understood his comment to be that it doesn't make any sense to separate out, to fragment, which is a word someone used in an email, a portion of this. So, that, that stuck with me. But then I took a look at some of the historical data relative to this property in this general area, and as you mentioned, Jack, we, we voted to open space, three Goose Pond parcels, the Atwood parcels, I think, a couple of years ago, on the recommendation. It was the last recommendation of the former Landbike Open Space Committee. And in 2019, the Select Board put on the warrant, the senior center for Middle Road. It was defeated because it didn't get two-thirds of the votes, but the yeses were 284 and the nays were 219. And then last summer, on, on the article to basically dedicate all of the 19 acres on Middle Road, and by the way, as I said at your committee, if you're for housing, you call it Middle Road. If you're for conservation, you call it Goose Pond.
That's right.
The vote on that was also unsuccessful because it didn't get two-thirds, but the yays were 259 and the nays were 225. So, on two separate occasions, a majority of Chatham voters who attended town meeting okayed a disturbance of some of the property at, at that location. So, I take some comfort in that. And as everyone has said, I respect both committees, but our job, and you've made your cases, our job as a Select Board is to, I think, try to show some leadership in the town in both these areas and try to achieve some balance. So, I'm going to vote in favor of the article presented by the Housing Partnership, and I'm going to vote present, I guess that's an abstention, on the open space committee, not because I want to shirk my responsibility, but because I really want to show some respect for the open space committee and not just cast a nay vote. So, that's where I'm coming down. But I think it's going to be a tough haul on either side, because both of these are going to require a two-thirds vote at town meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, with that, I guess I did put a motion on the table, right?
Yes, you did. Do we have a second? Yeah.
Can I ask Dean a question? So, Dean, you're going to vote present instead of abstain?
On?
On?
On the?
On, on that?
On the open space one.
And so, present?
I'm going to vote yes on the other one. I'll vote abstain. I don't think there is a present category, right?
Yeah.
I'll abstain, but I want everyone to know that I'm not abstaining because I, I just don't want to vote, throw a no vote at my committee.
I totally respect that and understand that, and I'd probably be voting for the compromised article rather than the?
Okay, remind me what the, what the motion is?
The motion is to support the, is to recommend the, the article as presented by the affordable, by the Chatham Housing Partnership.
To recommend?
To recommend.
Okay, because we already placed. Cory?
No, no, it, it, I just, I mean, I know it's all super late, but it's going to, so, I, I too will be voting in favor of the compromise article, but I definitely kind of acknowledge the fact that I want to send a positive message to the conservation article that, you know, in either case, we're looking at 15 acres of conservation, minimum, whether 15 versus 19. So, either way, we're looking for conservation. So, how, how do we word that first recommendation that we're not, I mean, I'm reading the room a little bit. I think we're going to oppose it procedurally, but to acknowledge that we're not trying to disrespect it, so.
Yeah, they hit the same problem. No?
We, we have to take a, we have to take a vote. That, that procedurally, yes, we have to take a vote. So, I'm, I'm struggling with how do we, how do we, you know, share that message? I'm, I'm open to thoughts. I mean?
Jeff, go ahead.
Well, we have, we have two different articles, so we do indeed have to take two, have to take two votes.
Correct.
And we all can't abstain. So, as much as we all, as much as we may all want to abstain, it's select from the cast, but select from the cast, he's, he's out of the gate first, so, I mean, so, so, we could all abstain?
You could all abstain on the second one. It's, it would not, it would mean that there's no recommendation, right? Jill?
Yeah, no.
Correct, or just not make a recommendation. Wait till town meeting if you wanted to.
Just don't say, just don't?
I would prefer not to make the recommendation.
You can decline a vote on it if you would not want to do that. I'm happy to do that instead of abstaining on a vote. But we have, we're not on that article yet. We're on the first article. I think Cory's asking whether there could be some revision to the articles?
I thought you moved the, I thought you moved the Middle Road, the, the open space. No, I thought you, I thought you moved Jack.
I'm sorry. I did. I apologize.
He moved Jack's, yeah, yeah, yeah. He did, yeah.
Let me, let me, let me understand. I thought we moved to place both articles.
We did, we did, but now we're moving.
Now, we're talking about?
Recommending.
Yeah. I'm losing control here.
So, Dean, Dean, you're rescinding your motion to recommend. Is that what you're doing?
I was just, in light of what Jack said, and Jeff, Jeff just said, I'm happy to reverse the order of dealing with these two articles and take the one first that we're likely, I sense that there's a majority vote, if not a unanimous vote, to support the partnership article. So, I'll withdraw my motion, which is on the part, the open space article. We'll deal with that next. If someone withdraws the second, whoever made the second, I don't remember.
Second.
The second, okay. You withdraw your second.
I withdraw a second, yeah. So, now, now I'll move a recommendation, favorable recommendation on the article from the Housing Partnership.
Okay.
I'll second that.
I'll second it. Any discussion? No. Okay, Shereen?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Okay, so now, we just not vote? No recommendation?
It's entirely up to you.
Well, if we don't, if we vote, it just leaves it that way, rather than a no or?
You got to vote. I think you have to vote, guys.
Well, we got to vote either tonight or a town meeting. We have to present a vote of some level at, at some time.
We could vote, Mr. Chairman, we could vote, and we could also in the explanation say, you know, we, we feel, even though it was a nay vote or, you know, it wasn't a, a majority vote, we are still supportive of conservation. In fact, you know, we're preserving 15 acres of conservation land. That's, that was the sentiment of the board, the consensus and the sentiment of the board.
Fine with me if it's legal, yeah, it's legal.
I'll move that we recommend approval of the open space committee article.
I'll second.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? Jeff?
No.
Dean?
Abstain.
Cory?
Nay.
No.
And the chair says no? Okay. Jack, thank you so much.
And he's not even running.
Oh, he's, Carolyn, thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Thank you, Carolyn.
Now, we get into refile our homeroom petitions of three of them, to refile them. We have, let's see, Katie. Hi, Katie. I just mentioned, before you start, we have three of them have to be, go to town meeting so that they don't expire before the legislature meets. Okay?
All right, sure. That's absolutely correct, Chairman Colas. And so, I did reach out to Sarah Ferrera from Representative Peak's office just to confirm what the vote would be, and it would be to reaffirm these votes. She also did relay to me that all three articles had been reported, articles, all three, our home rule petitions have been reported favorably out of committee, but that was all of the information she could give me at that time. They still have, you know, still have a ways to go, but they did suggest that in the event of, that they are not voted on prior to the next legislative session, that a reaffirmation of the votes at town meeting would be beneficial.
Hey, Katie, I have a question, and then I'll get to the board. It has to do with the, with the, the housing trust. I made the comment previously, I think, it must have been, sounds, feels like two days ago, where we, it includes two sections, and Carolyn spoke to it, one for the affordable trust, and then we have a special revenue fund for 200, 200% AMI. So, makes sense to drop that, as Carolyn has, has indicated. I know I've received pushback from it, sort of, at state level, and then I'll go to the board too, but what do you think?
So, my concern would be, especially now that we've learned that they, the bill has been reported favorably out of committee, I'm not sure that changing it at this point in time is the right thing to do. So, that would be my concern.
Okay.
About making a change.
Any comments?
I, I, I agree with Katie on this. I, I've gone back and forth on this a little bit, just because we had heard some recommendations that the committee had a little pushback on, on the designation of the 200%, but they did recommend it out, so it's, it's moving along. I don't think we can take any other action after the fact, no amendment to it on the floor or anything like that, because it's an act of town meeting. So, I think we need to, I think we need to stick with what we got.
Jeff?
Thank you, Peter. I would agree, because I think that in order to craft, we'd have to have a whole new home rule petition with different language. We'd have to get it to town meeting and revote it. I don't think, I think we have to stick with the language we've got.
Okay.
I don't, I don't see how, what we can do it, do it otherwise.
Thank you, Jeff. Yeah, I've been struggling with that, whether it made sense to do it or not, but, okay. Any other comments?
No.
Take a vote?
Mr. Chairman?
Separately, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I guess we do. Yeah, I guess we do.
Because it's legislation? Is that why?
No, because one of them, I probably am going to vote.
No, he wants to, he wants to grant stand.
I want, I want to live up to my reputation as reported in this Cape Cod Chronicle that I want to run, rant and rave about financial matters. I think they're 100% correct, and I want to testify to that.
Okay. This one talks about, could we?
It's getting late.
Let's have a vote to, to place the, the first one, the housing run on the?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We'll take a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
The chair says aye. Let me take a look at which one I want to get. No, no. I want to?
Second one is the Act of Establishing a Housing Trust Fund in the Town of Chatham.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's do that one. Move to place.
So moved.
We have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Nope. I didn't think so. All right, okay, Shereen?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And chair says aye. Then the last one is the Establishment of a Real Property Transfer Fee in the Town of Chatham. Kind of a motion to?
So moved.
Second.
And any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, it's late. I'm not going to go through my notes. I, I'm opposed to this in principle. I think there are some flaws in the, in the scheme as well, so I'm going to vote no on this. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, so, we need to vote place? Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
No.
Cory?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Chair says aye. And we need to, well, yeah, we have to recommend. Did we recommend the other ones? I'm going, we need to recommend each one.
You did. This is the last one.
Except for the last one.
This one needs a recommendation.
Yeah, wow, I don't want to save my short-term memory. We just placed it, so we need a recommendation.
Alec, did they, did they?
I don't think we recommended any of them. We just placed.
We just placed them.
It's getting late.
I moved to place an Act Facilitating the Appropriation Expenditure Community Preservation Funds for blah, blah, blah.
So moved.
For community housing purposes in the Town of Chatham.
Are we going to recommend?
I mean, to recommend, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry.
Second, is okay, okay. Shereen?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Okay, recommend the establishment of a housing trust fund in the Town of Chatham.
So moved.
Second. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. An act, move to act establishing a real property transfer fee in the Town of Chatham. We have a motion?
Recommend.
Recommend, recommend, got it. Second, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Discussion? No. Okay, Shereen?
Aye.
Aye.
Cory?
No.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Okay. The last thing on our order is, good thing it's a discussion preliminary, thank you Katie, preliminary ordering of the 2022 town meeting warrant articles. Jill, any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So because there's so many articles on the warrant, we want to start to work on the warrant document itself, and so I wanted to get some thoughts about how you want to group some of the articles. So we usually start with the financial articles first. So usually, so I guess for the document that you have, there's only one through six that's actually ordered, but I have the row numbers in here in case we want to refer to them. So one through six is pretty standard and to get us through the town operating budget, that's on line 10. So just want to make sure that the board wants to do the financial items first and then where do you want to go from there? We flipped before, so in 2021, we had the CPC articles, sorry.
After the operating budget.
After the operating budget. And then in, and we did the same in 2019, but in 2020, we went with some of the social infrastructure articles and then we put our petition to articles, then the CPA, but then again, that was a reduced warrant, that was something intentionally that the board had voted to keep the number of warrant articles down. So if you are open to it, if you want to provide some guidance on how you would like to group the articles.
I just have a couple, oh, I'll make a couple of comments. We have at different times put the zoning bylaws up towards the top. That was back in 2016 or something, or if I remember correctly. And the, oh, we have a recommendation that number 46 on the left side, right, 47, 46 and 47 should be swapped by Dr. Duncanson?
Yes, and so those are the items you're going to hear on Thursday night.
And, well, ahead, that's, Shereen and Jeff, you had your hand up, I'll go with Shereen first.
Given the discussion this evening, when I looked at the array here, articles? When I looked at the array here and I looked at, given the discussion tonight, articles 58, 60, 61, 62 ought to be, ought to be brought forward and at least tried the first night. I can't see that, to be honest with you, I can't see how this doesn't go two nights. How many articles we got? 60 articles?
Well, we still have two more citizens petitions coming through, so we're going to have 66?
And we're on a Saturday during the day, so I'm not sure how late we'll go, if we'll go until five, too.
I mean, I just, 58, 59, 60, 61, 62, those are, you know, those are hot and heavy. I mean, I don't think we get them up towards the front. I don't know exactly where, but that's a notion.
We've also heard from the moderator to do a consent calendar on the CPA articles. I think he's discussed that before. But I, I tend to agree with you, Jeff, on moving those up, but I really think the childcare should stay up there too. Maybe the bylaws for the waterways could be moved down and around. That's all really, I keep the childcare voucher up front. I would hate to see people just, you know, the younger group or the people that are going to be there to vote for housing, childcare and everything, just stay for those articles and bail, because that happens a lot, so. But I think it's important that we try to keep people there as long as possible, the more important stuff. That's all. I don't have any?
Yeah, I would plug the 58 to 60 of that, like after the Eldred Garage and there, like 30, 32, before you get to CPA, that's what I would do.
The consent calendar won't be limited to the CPA articles, I would hope. We could put some other things on it.
Right, so we would draft the articles, so as many as possible could be added to the consent motion.
Hey, I noticed Dr. Bob popped up there. Bob, you still there?
Is he here?
Yeah, I'm still here. I was just going to offer correction. It wasn't line items 46 and 47 swapping, it was 47 and 48.
Okay.
The two articles related to the phone.
Yep. Got it, all right, thank you.
Because if the one passes, the other one, if the one passes, we'd need the other one. If the first one doesn't pass, then the second one is moved.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, do you think, I'm sorry, not with what Bob just talked about, but with thinking about a consent motion in mind, then we could probably, it doesn't really matter where we put the CPA or CPC articles. So the question would be, you know, general bylaw amendments, do, would you want those towards the end? And citizen petitions, you know, we've gone both ways with citizen petitions. We put them at the end and sometimes we put them towards the top. Okay, so we'll look towards the end for those.
And I think the?
I think the refiles could be towards the end too. It's almost like an administrative action.
Yeah, maybe we can put those in for the consent motion too?